The United States of America. The request was also supported by the following thirty-seven observer states: Albania, Australia, Austria, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Bulgaria, Canada, Colombia, Croatia, Cyprus, Denmark, Dominican Republic, Ecuador, Estonia, Greece, Hungary, Iceland, Ireland, Italy, Japan, Latvia, Liechtenstein, Malta, Monaco, Kingdom of the Netherlands, New Zealand, North Macedonia, Norway, Peru, Poland, Portugal, Republic of Korea, Slovakia, Slovenia, Spain, Sweden, Switzerland and Uruguay. On 5th May, in accordance with Human Rights Council Resolution 5/1, the secretariat communicated the request for the holding of a special session to all member states. It also made the information available to the specialized agencies, other intergovernmental organizational nationalized institutions, as well as to non-governmental organizations in consultative status with ECOSOC, in line with the council's rules of procedure. The online inscription for the list of speakers opened on Tuesday, May 9th at 10:00 a.m., and closed on Wednesday, 10th May, at 6:00 p.m. The speaking time will be 2 minutes and 30 seconds for council members and 1 minute and 30 seconds for observer states and other observers. As announced during the open-ended informative consultation yesterday, the Bureau had agreed on May 8th to propose to the council for its approval extraordinary modalities for the thirty-sixth special session. The modalities were included in the annex to the minutes of the Bureau meeting circulated and published online on May 8th. They are similar to the modalities that were applied to the council's fifty-second regular session. I wish to reiterate that these modalities, if approved by this council, would apply exclusively to this thirty-sixth special session and should not serve as a precedent. Now let me ask if there are any delegations wishing to take the floor at this time on the proposed extraordinary modalities? I see none. Can I take it that the council agrees to the proposed modalities and those modalities will be applied during the thirty-sixth special session under the current circumstances? And since I see no objections, it is so decided. Excellencies, colleagues, please be reminded that you should respect the speaking time limits and speak at a reasonable pace in order to allow for good interpretation of your statements. I would also like to take this opportunity to ask everyone's support to ensure that the special session is carried out in an efficient and dignified manner. I kindly ask all delegates to adhere to language that is commensurate with dignity. I now have the honour to give the floor to Mr Forket Turk, High Commissioner for Human Rights, to make a statement via video message.
Mr President, excellencies, distinguished colleagues. Four years ago, the people of Sudan lit a beacon of hope for millions around the world. On 11 April 2019, popular protests brought an end to decades of tyranny and human rights violations, toppling the longstanding dictatorship of Omar al-Dashir. Women and young people were at the forefront, demanding good governance and a new social contract between the state and the people, based on democracy, freedom, justice and a fair share of development. This inspiring movement was followed by significant reforms, but the hoped-for transition to full civilian rule and democracy was once again dashed in October 21, when General Al-Burhan and General Dagalo jointly carried out a military coup. Last month, fighting exploded between the forces, led by those same two men, plunging this much-suffering country into catastrophe. Since 15 April, at least 487 civilians have been killed, notably in Khartoum, Al-Jannah, Ni'ala and El-Obeid. The real figure is much higher. More than 154,000 people have fled the country and an estimated 700,000 more have been displaced inside the borders of Sudan. Those who remain in areas affected by the conflict are at continued severe risk. In Khartoum, clashes between the two armed forces, shelling and airstrikes have taken place in heavily populated residential areas and millions of people are now struggling to access food, fuel and currency. In parts of Dafur, as well as the Blue Nile and Kordofan regions, the violence between military groups has triggered inter-ethnic clashes. In West Dafur, at least 100 people have been killed and thousands displaced by inter-communal violence between so-called Arab and Masalit groups, allied respectively with the Rapid Support Forces and the Sudanese Armed Forces. The country's health system has been severely damaged, with at least seventeen attacks against health facilities and several others occupied by military forces. People who have been wounded, women in childbirth or simply the severely ill, have nowhere to go. Years of development efforts are being obliterated by damage to water, electricity and communications infrastructure. Extensive and increasing looting of UN and international NGO offices, businesses and private property have also obstructed the humanitarian operations that kept millions of people alive and in health. WFP projects that if the conflict continues, 2.5 million more people could become acutely food insecure within three to six months, bringing the total to 19 million people, more than half the population. Already some 50,000 acutely malnourished children have been cut off from receiving life-saving treatment, according to OCHA. I strongly condemn this wanton violence in which both sides have crumpled international humanitarian law, notably the principles of distinction, proportionality and precaution. The Sudanese military has launched attacks in densely occupied civilian areas, including airstrikes. Last week, one airstrike reportedly hit the vicinity of a hospital in the east Nile area of Khartoum, killing several civilians. The RSF, meanwhile, has allegedly taken over numerous buildings in Khartoum to use as operational bases evicting residents and launching attacks from densely inhabited urban areas. These tactics place civilians at acute risk and prevent people from accessing critical supplies and assistance. We have also received several reports alleging sexual violence by uniform men, as well as allegations of unlawful killings and enforced disappearances. Mr President, six months ago, I visited Sudan. It was my first mission as UN High Commissioner for Human Rights. At that pivotal moment in the country's history, with talks underway to shape a transition to fully democratic civilian government, I expressed my solidarity with the people of Sudan and I needed to bring a strong message. Accountability and human rights must be at the core of any future agreement. In the course of that visit, I met both General Al-Burhan and General Dagalo, among many others. I urged them and all those who were involved in the talks to focus on accountability for past human rights violations and on the common good. Today, immense damage has been done, destroying the hopes and rights of millions of people. It is essential that both parties urgently commit to an inclusive political process and to negotiated peace. The ongoing talks in Jeddah, which focus on creating a ceasefire, need to be complemented by commitments to establish a humanitarian truce, to enable life-saving deliveries of aid, to allow for safe passage for civilians from areas of hostilities and to protect humanitarian supplies from looting. It is also crucial that discussions expand to respecting international humanitarian law, protecting civilians and bringing an end to human rights violations. To date, despite intense diplomatic efforts, notably by the African Union, the Intergovernmental Authority on Development, the League of Arab States and the United Nations, the leaders of the SAF and RSF have not agreed to discuss ending their hostilities. We have been moved by the courage and resilience of the people of Sudan, their desire for change and their attachment to principles of justice and freedom. They and their country are pivotal to the future of Africa. At the point where the two Niles, blue and white, surge into one majestic river, it is impossible not to see how profoundly connected is the continent and how powerfully its resources could drive growth and peace for millions of people. I condemn the use of violence by individuals who have no regard for the lives and fundamental rights of millions of their own compatriots. All parties must protect the rights of civilians and comply with international humanitarian and human rights law. If there is one lesson to be drawn from this tragic crisis, it is the pressing need for all transitional arrangements to build on bedrock commitments to accountability, non-discrimination and participation, so that peace can be sustainable and stable because it is just. Mr President, the Human Rights Council has called this special session to express its urgent concern for the rights and lives of Sudan's people. I take this opportunity to urge all states with influence in the region to encourage by all possible means the resolution of this crisis. In closing, I pay tribute to my staff, notably our national staff, who have been directly affected by the fighting and civilian shortages, and I express my deepest and most heartfelt solidarity with the people of Sudan. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr High Commissioner. Now let me give the floor to Ms Tannen Mofokeng, Chair of the Coordination Committee of Special Procedures, and she is going to join us via Zoom. Madam, we have the floor.
Mr President, distinguished delegates. I have the honour of addressing the council today on behalf of the Coordination Committee of Special Procedures. We welcome the decision to convene a special session on the human rights impact on the ongoing conflict in Sudan. As shown by the joint statement issued this morning by several mandated holders, including myself, Special Procedures have followed the evolving situation in the country closely and expressed serious concerns about the plight of the Sudanese people. The situation of human rights in Sudan has actually been under the radar of Special Procedures for many years, especially of successive country mandated holders from 1993 to 2020. The crisis in Sudan sparked by the clashes between the Rapid Support Forces and the Sudanese Armed Forces has now extended beyond three weeks. Throughout this period, innocent women, men, girls and boys have borne the severe consequences of the conflict, enduring immense hardship and remaining exposed to significant protection risks. And the situation remains deeply distressing and demands urgent attention and action. Since the onset of hostilities, an alarming number of lives have been lost, with hundreds perishing and thousands sustaining injuries, tragically including children. The dire consequences of this crisis have compelled hundreds of thousands of individuals to seek refuge, while others have been forcibly displaced from their homes. Regrettably, Sudanese violence in search of safety reportedly have found themselves subjected to egregious human rights violations, including sexual and gender-based violence, and deprived of vital necessities such as food, water, healthcare, including reproductive health, fuel and other basic commodities. Moreover, the breakdown in communication services has added to the distressing predicament faced by those affected. Amidst this turmoil, numerous individuals find themselves trapped within densely populated residential areas of Khartoum, Bahri, Omaduman, as well as towns in Dafur and northern Kordofan. With the absence of electricity and the scarcity of healthcare and essential services and the depletion of food, water and medical supplies, they cannot confront an uncertain future as a direct consequence of the ongoing conflict. Of particular concern is also the safety and well-being of women and children, people with disabilities and older persons. As families escape from hostilities, they face the distressing reality of being torn apart, which raises the likelihood of exposing them to severe human rights violations such as enforced disappearances. Moreover, the ability to monitor and document the situation on the ground has been significantly hindered due to the targeting of journalists, as well as the intimidation and threats faced by human rights defenders, particularly women human rights defenders in Dafur and Khartoum. This situation has resulted in an information blackout. Mr President, prior to this crisis, the Sudan already had 3.7 million internally displaced persons within that country. Tragically, the delivery of critically needed food assistance, vital infrastructure and life-saving services has been subjected to what appear to be deliberate and indiscriminate attacks, posing a grave threat to the humanitarian personnel, including local healthcare workers, impeding their efforts. Despite the dedicated work of humanitarian organizations to expand the operations, the persistent conflict severely hampers access to essential provisions, including food and other necessities. Urgent and decisive measures are imperative to tackle the worsening crisis. We need to protect the rights and well-being of vulnerable people and rehabilitate critical infrastructure and services. These actions are crucial in guaranteeing unhindered access to healthcare and ensuring the safety and security of all individuals affected by the crisis. Mr President, as stressed in the statement issued by Special Procedures yesterday on the present situation, we urge measures are imperative to tackle the worsening crisis. We need to protect the rights and well-being of vulnerable people and rehabilitate critical infrastructure and services. These actions are crucial in guaranteeing unhindered access to healthcare and ensuring the safety and security of all individuals affected by the crisis. Mr President, as stressed in the statement issued by Special Procedures yesterday on the present situation, we urgently implore the conflicting parties to seize all hostilities without delay, thereby de-escalating the volatile circumstances and creating an environment conducive to the resumption of unhindered and comprehensive humanitarian operations. This crucial step is paramount in alleviating the immense suffering endured by affected individuals, ensuring provision of life-saving protection to those in dire need and a pathway to sustainable development. We urge the conflicting parties to uphold their responsibilities according to international law, ensuring the safety of civilians and vital civilian infrastructure, such as schools and hospitals. It is crucial for them to publicly commit to safeguarding humanitarian personnel, facilities and resources, thereby ensuring unrestricted access to aid and assistance. We recognize the efforts of neighboring countries and urge all states to maintain open borders, allowing the entry of individuals seeking refuge, not to return any Sudanese presently abroad and to provide adequate protection and humanitarian aid to those who are fleeing in Sudan, including those who are already internally displaced within Sudan before the escalation. Additionally, we call upon states to allocate resources to the neighboring countries, assisting them in accommodating the influx of people who are resulting from the Sudanese conflict. Finally, we urge the immediate initiation of independent and impartial investigations into the loss of civilian lives, injuries sustained by individuals and cases of ill treatment and other gross human rights violations inflicted upon humanitarian personnel, healthcare workers, human rights defenders, journalists, as well as attacks on civilian infrastructure. Special Procedures are ready to work with this council, the High Commissioner and its designated expert to continue monitoring and providing advice to address and improve the situation on the ground. I thank you, Mr President.
Thank you, madam, for your statement. Colleagues, let me indicate that the list of speakers is now closed and we will now hear from the country concerned. So let me give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sudan. Ambassador, you have five minutes and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr President. At the outset, I would like to convey my condolences to all those who have fallen victims of the military confrontation in my country since the rebellion of the RSF on the 15th of April and wishing quick recovery to the victims. Allow me at the outset to describe what's happening in Sudan. The integration of RSF in the National Army, the Sudanese Armed Forces, was one of the main challenges of the transitional period, especially after the signing of the Juba Peace Agreement on the 3rd of October 2020 and the integration of armed groups in the army according to the Protocol of Security Arrangements and the principle of the One National Army, as it is the case in all the countries of the world. However, unfortunately, the issue of integration has been constantly postponed until it exploded on the 15th of April, when Khartoum woke up to witness a full military attack by rebel forces on all strategic facilities in Khartoum, namely headquarters of the army, hospitality house, the headquarters of the president of the Sovereignty Council, airport, radio and TV headquarters, in parallel with attacks to all other airports and vital facilities and other governorates. What's happening in Sudan is an internal affair and what the SAF are doing is a constitutional duty to all armies in all the countries of the world. I repeat, what the Sudanese Armed Forces are doing is a constitutional duty to all armies of all the countries of the world. We thank your council for its close follow-up and interest in what's happening in Sudan. However, we reiterate that our position vis-à-vis this ad hoc session and any session, sorry, and any consequences is based on the following. First, whilst we reiterate the absolute priority of our government to human rights promotion and protection, however, and under the dire circumstances that we are witnessing, namely in the capital Khartoum and the military clashes and the falling of victims and wounded persons, we have a priority which is to achieve a ceasefire, to save lives. This is our priority and this is in line with the Universal Declaration for Human Rights, which turned the right to life as a priority, followed by all other tracks. Second, there are regional efforts underway to achieve a ceasefire and the truce. We have followed the negotiations underway in Jeddah under the blessed initiative of the brotherly Kingdom of Saudi Arabia and the United States of America. Before that, the initiative by Ighad, which had asked their excellencies, the presidents of South Sudan, Djibouti and Kenya, to go to Sudan and to engage in these negotiations. It is an initiative which is supported by the African Union and the Quad comprising Kingdom of Saudi Arabia, United Arab Emirates, USA and the UK. This is a positive initiative which is in line with the principle of African solutions for African problems. That's why, Mr President, we are asking to allow us more time, a greater opportunity to these inter-regional efforts without overcoming them or negatively impacting them. Third, since the rebellion by the RSF on the 15th of April, the issue of Sudan is still under consideration before the Security Council, given that it's the entity in charge of preserving international peace and security. So far, three sessions have been held by the Security Council regarding Sudan, the latest being one held yesterday. The issue of Sudan is still under consideration before the Security Council. Fourth, the issue of Sudan is on the agenda of the Human Rights Council. There was a session due to be held in next June, during the 53rd session. We have less than three weeks pending the holding of the upcoming session on Sudan. Why are you rushing to hold such an ad hoc session in this timing, especially that it has not received the support of any African or Arab countries, which are our groups of direct belonging? Mr President, protecting and promoting human rights has always been and will always remain as part of the priorities of our government. This is a very important national agenda, not only prerequisites that are imposed on us to implement international human rights. Mr President, regarding the human rights mechanisms that are present in Sudan, let me enumerate them. First of all, the OHCHR office established based on an agreement with the Sudanese government.
Three or five minutes. Now, start with the list of speakers. And allow me to recall that the speaking time limit is 2 minutes and 30 seconds for council members and 1 minute and 30 seconds for observer states and other observers. And I thank you very much for your understanding that the rules are applicable to everyone. Starting with the list of speakers for member states of the council, let me give the floor to the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland, right, Honorable Andrew Mitchell, MP, Minister of State for Development and Africa, via Zoom.
Thank you, Mr President. Today, we express our solidarity with the people of Sudan. When the late Kofi Annan proposed the creation of this council, he asked for a body that could react in the very worst moments, a council that would respond quickly, so we could help save lives. Since the 15th of April, Sudan has descended rapidly into crisis. Hundreds of civilians have been killed, thousands injured, humanitarian actors murdered. The risk of violence and atrocities against particular groups is rising. Millions more face shortages of food and medicine or have been forced to flee as refugees. The Secretary-General has warned that the effects of the wider region will be very severe indeed. But there is an alternative to conflict, to killing, to the suffering of totally innocent and blameless people. Despite the military takeover in 2021, Sudan had been on the path to democratic civilian rule. It was working with the UN human rights system to build domestic institutions and it was making progress. Surely, we must revert to the political track, so important and so evident on April the 11th. Dear colleagues, let us be the council of Mr Annan's vision. Let's do all we can to help Sudan return to that path of peace and let's do it now. We must send a united message of concern and of horror about the increase in human rights violations and abuses since the outbreak of the conflict. We must use our collective influence to break the cycle of impunity in Sudan, which only leads to further violence. There must be accountability for the horrific events taking place. Mr President, I would like to express my appreciation for all those working tirelessly with the parties in Sudan to end the violence, colleagues from the African Union, the Intergovernmental Authority on Development, the Arab League and United Nations, virtually the entire cohort of the international community. It is vital these efforts continue. To colleagues in the council, I urge you to adopt today's draft resolution to express our united support for the human rights of the Sudanese people and to work together for a swift end to this terrible conflict. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Minister. And now we will continue with Lebanon, speaking on behalf of Group of Arab States. Lebanon, you have the floor.
Thank you, President. I have the honour of making this statement on behalf of the Group of Arab States. The group is following with great concern the development of the situation in Sudan and we stand in solidarity with the people of Sudan as they go through these difficult times. Our group attaches great importance to the ceasefire and to the provision of humanitarian aid and we welcome all international and regional initiatives aimed at ending the conflict, the latest being negotiations in Juba in the context of the Saudi-American-led initiative. Of course, we call on all of the parties in Sudan to encourage the dialogue, to achieve a comprehensive political solution in order to tackle the challenges and ensure a democratic transition and achieve the rule of law. Of course, we encourage dialogue and the fact of sending messages that encourage reconciliation between the parties and strengthen stability during the transition period are all beneficial. In particular, we recommend free elections under international observation and with full respect for the territorial integrity, the independence and political ownership of South Sudan. We stand in solidarity with Sudan for this is the affected country and of course Sudan, as the affected country, has a right for its views to be taken into account by the council before new mechanisms are established or before the mandate of existing mandates is extended. We regret that the draft resolution... We regret that the draft resolution includes wording and issues which this council has not had the time to debate yet and which would warrant an in-depth examination at greater time. We urge the Bureau of the Council to provide all necessary assistance to Sudan in order to help it along the way to ensuring respect for human rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Sweden, on behalf of the European Union.
Mr. President, the European Union is gravely concerned about the human rights situation in Sudan. The impact of the conflict, not least on women, children and persons already in vulnerable situations, including increased level of SGBV, is deeply concerning. Humanitarian needs are at an all-time high and are expected to increase. The political crisis and continued fighting have drastically reduced the options for an operational response to these growing needs. For these reasons, all EU member states supported the request for this session. The EU strongly condemns the fighting between Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces, which fundamentally threatens the safety and security of the people of Sudan as well as the unity and stability of the country and the region. We appeal to all parties to silence the guns immediately and hostilities without preconditions and fully abide by ceasefire efforts. We call on all actors to protect civilians and refrain from attacks on civilian infrastructure, including schools, healthcare facilities and humanitarian warehouses. International Human Rights Law, Nihl, must be respected. The EU calls on all actors to allow and facilitate rapid, safe and unimpeded humanitarian access as well as to protect civilians, especially children, and ensure the safety of humanitarians, medical and also diplomatic personnel. Ensuring their safety is the responsibility of the authorities. The fighting must end to guarantee their protection and allow space for inclusive dialogue and mediation. The EU welcomes and supports all efforts for dialogue and mediation in order to end the current conflict and facilitate a return to the path of democracy, including those of the UN, EU, IGAD, the League of Arab States as well as initiatives by Saudi Arabia and the US and South Sudan. All efforts must respect the aspirations of the people in Sudan for a peaceful, stable and democratic future with respect for human rights and the rule of law. External actors must refrain from fueling the conflict. The EU fully supports the work of the OHCHR and the designated expert in Sudan. The EU reaffirms its steadfast support and solidarity with the people of Sudan who led the peaceful revolution in 2019 and whose aspirations remain critical even under such duress. I thank you.
Thank you. And now let me invite Finland on behalf of a group of countries. Finland.
Mr. President, I have the honour to deliver this statement on behalf of the Nordic and Baltic countries. We call on the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces to immediately stop violence and hostilities, commit to a ceasefire and return to a peaceful dialogue with full respect for human rights law and international humanitarian law. We call on the parties to allow and facilitate immediate return to full and unimpeded humanitarian access and for civilians to move safely. As reporting on grave violations and abuses of human rights in Sudan is increasing, we underline the impact of the conflict on civilians, especially women, children and persons in vulnerable situations such as persons with disabilities. We are concerned over sexual and gender-based violence and the negative impacts on upholding sexual and reproductive health and rights. The neighbouring countries of Sudan have taken on lifesaving work in hosting the hundreds of thousands of persons who have left the country. The longer the conflict continues, the more detrimental its impacts will be on everyone, particularly children. According to UNICEF, at least 190 children have been killed and more than 1,700 injured thus far. Furthermore, access to lifesaving health services, including vaccination programmes as well as to water and sanitation services and to nutrition, is jeopardized. We urge all parties to the conflict to do their utmost to protect children. These children are the future of the country. Finally, we welcome the strengthening of the mandate of the Designated Expert and the OHCHR as proposed in the resolution. Accountability for violations and abuses of international human rights law and violations of international humanitarian law remains crucial. I thank you.
Thank you. And now let me invite Oman, speaking on behalf of Gulf Cooperation Council.
President, I am making this statement on behalf of the states of the Gulf Cooperation Council. The GCC are following with great concern the development of the situation in Sudan and we stand in solidarity with the Sudanese people in these unprecedented and difficult circumstances. We call for calm and for restraint and we call for dialogue and the voice of reason to prevail. We need a peaceful dialogue to ensure political stability and allow for economic recovery. We commend the negotiations taking place in Jeddah at the initiative of the US and Saudi Arabia with a view to achieving a truce and a ceasefire in coordination with the Troika and the Quattor and IGAD. The goal is also to facilitate the supply of humanitarian aid. We also welcome regional initiatives aimed at weathering crisis and restoring political stability and security. The countries of the GCC would like to iterate how important it is to preserve the state's cohesiveness and that of its institutions and to respond to the aspirations of the Sudanese people. We call on the international community to encourage dialogue and political consensus between all stakeholders and to reinforce stability during the transition period. As regards the members of the Human Rights Council, we call on them to reaffirm and respect the sovereignty, territorial integrity and political independence of Sudan. Sudan should take political ownership of the process and its consent is essential before any mechanisms, whatever they may be, are established. By way of conclusion, the GCC states will continue to support Sudan through humanitarian aid and relief operations and evacuation operations and we welcome the swift humanitarian aid provided by other states and international organisations as well. We call for international efforts to be stepped up to continue medical and humanitarian assistance so as to meet the needs on the ground and ensure that the situation does not deteriorate any further. We also emphasise the importance of technical assistance provided by the Bureau of the High Commissioner's Office to promote human rights in the country. Thank you.
And the next speaker on my list is Germany. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. High Commissioner, Germany aligns itself to the EU statement. As we convene here in Geneva today, the human rights of the people of Sudan are violated. Innocent women, children and men are running out of water and food, are left without access to healthcare and are losing their lives. International humanitarian law is repeatedly broken and I do thank the High Commissioner for his clear words in this room today. It is very clear. Human rights also apply in times of conflict and international humanitarian law must be respected. This is why, together with the core group, we have called for this special session. The high number of states supporting today's session proves one thing. The international community is steadfast in its support of the people of Sudan and their struggle for freedom, peace and justice. We do support all initiatives to restore peace. Peace is urgently needed. But let me say one thing also very clearly. Lasting peace and the respect for human rights go hand in hand. The conflict is jeopardising the safety and security of the Sudanese people, the stability of the country and the region. The humanitarian situation is appalling. There is a clear risk of further escalation of the conflict with even more grave impact for civilians and Germany therefore urges all sides to immediately ceasefire, protect civilians and refrain from attacks on civilian infrastructure. Access for humanitarian help is urgently needed. In 2019, the people of Sudan stood up. They toppled a dictatorship and ever since have peacefully been fighting for a peaceful future for Sudan. Two generals are crushing this aspiration right now and Germany urges to step back from the brink and set Sudan back on tracks towards a civilian-led democratic government. Germany therefore supports the efforts of the UN, the African Union, IGAD, as well as the US Saudi Initiative for Dialogue and Mediation in pursuit of a return for a civilian-led transition, peace and stability. Today is the moment for us here in Geneva to act. The resolution is a call for peace, for human rights. Let us join hands together and vote in favour of peace of this resolution. We owe it to the people of Sudan.
Thank you very much. And let me invite Ukraine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ukraine is deeply concerned with the developments in Sudan in the wake of a serious outbreak of conflict, which has already left hundreds of civilians dead and thousands wounded. The escalation of violence across the country since 15 April has aggravated the already hazardous humanitarian situation. According to OCHA, humanitarian needs have reached record levels. The continuous attacks on medical and humanitarian facilities and staff have endangered humanitarian operations. Dozens of settlements have been destroyed and thousands of people have been internally and externally displaced. Access to healthcare continues to be severely impacted by the conflict. My government has evacuated more than 100 Ukrainians as well as third-country nationals from the Sudan in the conditions of incessant fighting. No electricity scares food, water and medicine. This appalling human rights situation in Sudan needs urgent attention by the international community, including this council. We echo the relevant messages of concern made by UN Secretary General, UN High Commissioner for Human Rights and Council Special Procedures. The parties must implement an immediate ceasefire and allow the humanitarian access without preconditions. Violence, intimidation and harassment of the Sudanese people must be stopped. All perpetrators must be brought to account. We call upon all actors in this Sudan to take immediate actions to restore respect for human rights and humanitarian law, to refrain from further violations, assaults and abuses and to begin a dialogue to resolve the crisis. We support all relevant international mediation efforts in this regard. Ukraine aligns the importance of the council's proper response to the evolving human rights situation in this Sudan and fully supports the draft resolution under consideration. This council action is needed to put an end to the sufferings of the Sudanese people who crave for a just peace. I thank you.
Thank you. And now let me invite Paraguay.
Thank you, President. First of all, we would like to express our condolences in light of the situation and the 500 deaths that have occurred in recent days. We would also like to express our concern at the deterioration of the human rights situation in Sudan. Once again, it is the civilian population that is bearing the brunt, especially in light of the indiscriminate use of explosive weapons in urban areas that have cost the lives of civilians and damaged infrastructure and left millions without access to essential goods and services. Therefore, we call on all parties involved to work hard in order to immediately cease the violence and above all, to respect the life of civilians and cease the use of indiscriminate weapons in populated urban areas. We urge the authorities of Sudan to honour their commitments and fulfil their duty of protecting people's lives and to ensure the swift carrying out of transparent, objective and impartial investigations when the time comes. President, over the last few weeks, Sudan has shown that there is a need to strengthen international scrutiny over the situation on the ground and it is essential to adopt measures to deter violations against the civilian population and to ensure that the perpetrators are brought to justice. The serious situation described both by the Secretary General and by the High Commissioner, Mr. Turk, have driven my delegation to supporting the convening of this special session on the understanding that this council is the appropriate space for tackling reports of human rights violations. We believe that the African Union also has a role to play in this difficult situation and that other UN agencies will also do the job that falls to them, such as the Security Council. We must ensure that there are concrete responses that are provided to help the victims of human rights violations who continue to wait for a response from the international community. Finally, President Paraguay is confident that the mechanisms established by the universal human rights system has the necessary tools for achieving the goals for which we states agreed to establish this Human Rights Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I would like to invite Argentina.
Thank you, President. The UN Secretary General and its special representative, as well as the High Commissioner for Human Rights and the UN agencies, the ICRC, have all been very clear in expressing their concern about the human rights and humanitarian situation in Sudan. They report attacks by the warring parties against civilians and civil infrastructure, including schools and hospitals. This has led to desperate shortages of food, water, electricity, fuel and limited access to medical care. Against this backdrop, we are concerned by the thousands of wounded and hundreds of dead, the increase in the levels of sexual and gender-based violence, restrictions imposed by the warring parties on humanitarian aid and attacks against humanitarian workers. We are also concerned by the attacks against installations and members of international organisations as well as civil society organisations and the diplomatic community. Such violence must cease immediately and we urge all parties to the conflict to fully respect human rights and international humanitarian law and to allow immediate and unhindered access for humanitarian aid and to protect civilians. Sudan, as a member of the Human Rights Council, has the obligation to maintain the highest standards of promotion and protection for human rights. We urge the government of Sudan to continue and strengthen its cooperation with the Human Rights Expert in Sudan, with the African Union, with the Intergovernmental Authority for Development, the African Commission on Human Rights and the Rights of Peoples and the League of Arab States, as well as the special procedures of the Human Rights Councils and all UN treaty bodies. We urge the parties to the conflict to immediately cease hostilities, to abide by a ceasefire and to return to the process of transitioning to a civilian-led government. It is vital to contribute to ensuring that this council has all the requisite elements for providing assistance to Sudan and helping Sudan to comply with its international humanitarian and human rights obligations, which is one of the key goals of this session. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Now let me invite Cameroon.
Thank you, President. President, Cameroon is deeply concerned by the current crisis situation in Sudan. My country is distressed by the unspeakable suffering of the people of Sudan as a result of this renewed tension. My country calls for an immediate ceasefire and a peaceful resolution of the crisis. We call on the belligerents to create conditions for humanitarian assistance to be properly deployed in the country in order to help those who are suffering and in distress. Cameroon also welcomes the willingness of the Sudanese authorities in power to engage in dialogue and cooperation with the UN Human Rights Mechanisms. We encourage them to persevere in this way in order to definitively restore peace and coexistence in the interests of Sudan's development. Furthermore, my country commends all initiatives aimed at bringing peace to Sudan, particularly within the United Nations and regional initiatives led by IGAD under the auspices of the African Union, the Arab League and many others. In this regard, Cameroon welcomes the action of the Office of the United Nations High Commissioner for Human Rights, its interest and its strong involvement aimed at protecting people and preventing human rights violations. However, my country believes that in its human rights promotion dimension, the OHCHR should place emphasis on strengthening the rule of law and promoting democracy because the resurgence of crisis reflects a democratic deficit. Finally, my country believes that the resolution that this special session must sanction must send a message that promotes peace and reduces hatred in Sudan. It must therefore be balanced and consensual and take into account the expectations and hopes of the population, which is the main target of all the human rights violations going on. Thank you.
going on. Thank you.
Morocco. Thank you, Mr President. At the outset, we commend the efforts by the Brotherhood Republic of Sudan in dealing in a serious and fruitful interaction with the OHCHR, Human Rights Council and Special Procedures. We also support our solidarity and absolute terms with the Sudanese people and whilst we regret the tragic situation in this brotherly country, we also support the initiatives and steps by the Arab League, including sending humanitarians as assistance. We also welcome the efforts undertaken by other countries and other international organisations to bring parties closer together and to pave the way and provide an environment conducive to a constructive dialogue. We hope that we will be able to preserve the territorial integrity and national sovereignty of Sudan, to preserve the wealth of its people by returning to the voice of wisdom and the peace process to find a solution to the crisis in Sudan and to pave the way for a new era which fulfils the aspirations and hopes of the Sudanese people and contributes to preserving security and stability in this country. At the same time, we insist on all parties to immediately cease all forms of military clashes. Finally, Mr President, we would like to thank all parties that contributed and worked on providing safe corridors, be it by air, by sea or by land, in order to secure the evacuation of innocent civilians and diplomatic teams back to their countries or to safe areas outside the conflict zone. Thank you, Mr President.
Thank you, and let me invite Belgium.
Monsieur le Président.
President, Belgium aligns itself with the statement by the European Union. It is true that the Sudanese people has for several weeks now been suffering the heavy consequences of this conflict, yet their fundamental rights have been flouted for much longer. In 2019, a movement, 1 million people strong, was brave enough to rise up and demand better living conditions and respect for their civil and political rights. Sadly, this transition has not yet been completed. On the contrary, the conflicts that have been raging on the territory of Sudan since the 15th of April have killed and wounded hundreds of civilians and forced thousands of people to be displaced within and without Sudan. In addition to the security risks, there is a lack of access to water and we urge an end to the conflict and we call for necessary conditions to be established for a return to dialogue and a civilian transition in accordance with the will of the Sudanese people. We condemn the air raids and generalised plundering. The longer the combats go on, the higher the risks of the situation turning into a civil war with serious regional repercussions. We are therefore glad that the Security Council and regional actors stood united in their opposition to the conflict. We support all mediation initiatives that are regionally anchored. That, however, does not exclude the urgent need for this council to respond to the grave human rights situation in Sudan. The lack of respect for human rights will contribute to further exacerbating the situation and will make a sustainable solution ever harder to achieve. Finally, we welcome Sudan’s cooperation with the Human Rights Office, both in Khartoum and elsewhere. We believe that in light of the current crisis, it is only logical to strengthen the support for the independent expert on human rights so as to prevent fresh violations of human rights. We call on all members of the council to support the Sudanese people, to maintain the unity of the international community and to approve this resolution by consensus. Thank you.
The United States of America, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr President, and I thank the High Commissioner for his sobering remarks. They are a stark reminder of the terrible human toll this latest conflict has had on the people of Sudan. Hundreds of civilians are dead and thousands wounded. Countless more have been suffering for weeks, unable to leave their homes for food, water, fuel, medicine, treatment or to check on loved ones. They live in constant fear, fear of the next bomb dropped, the next bullet fired, the next knock at the door. To the people of Sudan, I say we stand with you and for you. We will not give up on you, nor will we turn away. We cannot let the people of Sudan lose hope. It was this hope that inspired us in 2019, when the people rose to reclaim the destiny of Sudan after decades of misrule. The people of Sudan deserve better. It is our responsibility to listen, to amplify their voices and to push for peace. At the same time, we must demand full respect for international human rights law and international humanitarian law and that parties to the conflict respect and protect civilians, including humanitarian personnel. We certainly should all agree that any attack or threat against humanitarian and health workers is unacceptable. I am horrified and deeply concerned by reports of targeting of hospitals and healthcare providers, forced recruitment of children and gender-based violence, including conflict-related sexual violence. We acknowledge those who say the world should wait longer to address the human rights and humanitarian aspects of this tragedy. However, the US is of the clear view that negotiations to establish a ceasefire and get desperately needed humanitarian assistance flowing to the people of Sudan can and must occur at the same time that our council fulfils its role and mandate in addressing the dire human rights situation. In fact, this is the moment to send a clear message to the parties of the conflict that the world is watching and expects them to deliver for the people of Sudan. Parties to the conflict need to ensure safe humanitarian access and the protection of civilians and here at the HRC we have a duty to help make that more likely. I would like to ask the panel what can be done to strengthen protection of civilians to include members of all vulnerable groups. I thank you.
Thank you. La France, vous avez la parole.
Merci, Monsieur le Président.
Thank you very much, President. President France aligns itself with the statement by the European Union and we thank the High Commissioner and the President of the Coordinating Committee for their clear-sighted presentations of the situation and their calls for urgent action. We would like to express our deep concern about the conflict in Sudan and we are concerned by the increasing number of civilian victims. We condemn the indiscriminate attacks and violations against civilians and humanitarian personnel and UN staff members. The deliberate targeting of civilian infrastructure such as hospitals is unacceptable. This situation creates great displacement of populations within Sudan and towards neighbouring countries and thousands of civilians see their rights to fundamental services violated and trampled. Access to humanitarian aid must be immediate and unhindered. We call on the Sudanese forces to not take part in the fighting. We commend the efforts by the United Nations, the African Union and several countries in the region, including South Sudan and Saudi Arabia, as well as IGAD, the Arab League and the United States, efforts all aimed at achieving a ceasefire and an end to the hostilities. Only dialogue can ensure respect for a permanent ceasefire and inclusive political negotiation so as to find a way out of the crisis. President, the holding of this extraordinary session is a clear signal from the international community. Respect for human rights and fundamental freedoms and the protection of civilians, the return towards lasting peace, all go hand in hand. In this context, we call for the protection of journalists and human rights defenders to be respected. Peacebuilding must rest on an impartial and transparent judicial process and the perpetrators of abuses must be held to account. This is essential to avoid a repetition of cycles of violence and to respond to the needs of justice of the victims. That is why we co-sponsor this resolution which seeks to strengthen the documentation of the abuses that are being committed and we also call for the 2019 processes to be pursued so as to re-establish democracy. France will provide exceptional humanitarian assistance for this crisis and at the request of support from neighbouring countries, which, and we commend this, are welcoming civilians fleeing the conflict. Thank you very much.
Now let me invite Malaysia.
Mister President, Malaysia is following closely the situation in Sudan. We remain deeply concerned over the continued fighting in Sudan and strongly condemn the hostilities which have caused destruction of properties and loss of innocent lives. Thus far, the conflict has resulted in hundreds of civilian casualties and tens of thousands more have been displaced. We are concerned that a prolonged conflict will only lead to further suffering for the Sudanese people. Malaysia is of the view that the immediate priority for the situation in Sudan is to end the violence and instability in the country. Therefore, Malaysia believes that inclusive dialogue and negotiations are the only means to restore peace and stability in Sudan. We urge both parties to engage in meaningful dialogue while safeguarding the interests of the Sudanese people, to ensure ceasefire and to work towards a peaceful resolution. Malaysia commands Saudi Arabia’s efforts in facilitating peace talks to reach immediate and lasting ceasefire in Sudan. In this regard, we welcome the ongoing pre-negotiation talks between the representatives of the Sudanese armed forces and the Rapid Support Forces mediated by Saudi Arabia and the United States in Jeddah. In this regard, Malaysia stands ready to support regional and international mediation efforts to return Sudan to the path of peace. Mister President, Malaysia is deeply concerned with the dire humanitarian conditions in Sudan, including food shortages as well as limited access to healthcare, transportation, communications and other basic necessities. Therefore, we underline the need for establishment of humanitarian corridors and unimpeded access to humanitarian assistance into and throughout Sudan. We urge all parties to grant access to humanitarian aid and medical supplies and fully comply with their obligations under international humanitarian law and international human rights law. As the situation remains volatile, we urge all parties in Sudan to prioritise the safety and security of civilians, including the vulnerable groups. We also call on all parties to allow a safe evacuation process for foreign citizens. Malaysia would like to take this opportunity to thank all parties involved in the safe evacuation of 33 Malaysians and 27 other citizens, especially Saudi Arabia, the UAE and Pakistan. Finally, Malaysia remains in solidarity with the people of Sudan and will continue to support efforts towards finding a peaceful and amicable solution to the ongoing conflict. I thank you.
Thank you. Czech Republic.
Thank you, Mister President. The Czech Republic aligns itself with the EU statement. The Czech Republic is deeply concerned by the recent outbreak of violence in Sudan. The humanitarian situation in the country is catastrophic. We don’t know yet how many persons have been killed and wounded during the ongoing conflict. The numbers will be high. We are worried that it will be many more than the reported hundreds of victims. We are concerned that the current situation might evolve into a long-term conflict affecting the whole country. We call on the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces to immediately stop the fighting and respect the ceasefire. The situation in Sudan cannot be solved by an armed conflict. Access of humanitarian aid must be facilitated. Civilians must be protected. It is unacceptable to conduct attacks on schools and healthcare facilities in the armed conflict. The situation is showing us the fragility of states in democratic transition. Just a few years ago, we expressed our support to the efforts of the transitional government to improve the human rights situation in Sudan and to lead Sudan to democratic elections. It is unfortunate that the positive developments in the country were stopped by the 2021 coup and only two years later we are witnessing these hostilities. For these reasons, the Czech Republic has supported the submitted resolution and we hope it will be adopted by consensus. I thank you.
Thank you, and now let me invite Montenegro.
Mister President, Montenegro shares serious concerns about the grave human rights situation in Sudan, exacerbated by the outbreak of the conflict between the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces on April 15. A significant escalation of violence has already led to the death of hundreds of civilians and injuries to thousands, including children. The ongoing fighting is also plagued by the increased levels of sexual and gender-based violence, mass displacement and destruction of property and civilian infrastructure. The outbreak of hostilities has further increased food insecurity and threatened access to vital life facilities, including education and healthcare services, water and sanitation. It has deteriorated the already dire situation of millions of people, approximately a third population, in need of humanitarian assistance. Overall, heightened violence in Sudan threatens the safety and security of its people as well as the unity and stability of the country. Any further escalation of the conflict could be devastating for the country and efforts to restore the civilian-led transition towards democracy as the only path to freedom, peace and justice for all Sudanese. This reversing development also risks regional destabilisation. We strongly condemn ongoing fighting and all relating reported violence and abuses of human rights and violations of international humanitarian law by all parties to the conflict across the country. We join the common appeal to all parties for immediate cessation of hostilities without preconditions and full respect for the ceasefire efforts. We further call on all actors to allow and facilitate swift and unimpeded humanitarian access to and evacuation of civilians as well as to protect them and assure the safety of humanitarian, international and diplomatic personnel. Montenegro extends its full support to all ongoing efforts aimed at backing dialogue and mediation towards returning to the path of democracy. For all this reason, Montenegro supported the core group’s request for convening the special session on the human rights impact of the ongoing conflict in Sudan. We thank the core group for its constructive engagement during the consultation on the tabled resolution on this matter and call for its adoption. Montenegro reiterates its staunch support and solidarity with the Sudanese people and shares their hopes and aspirations for achieving lasting peace, stability, justice and democracy. I thank you.
Thank you, and now let me invite the delegation of China.
Mister President, China follows closely the latest developments in Sudan. China calls on both parties to the conflict to put the interests of the country and the people first, to achieve a ceasefire as soon as possible so as to create conducive conditions for humanitarian assistance and to avoid further escalation. China firmly supports Sudan’s sovereignty, independence and territorial integrity. We trust that Sudan has the wisdom and ability to handle its national affairs, internal affairs, and put an end to the conflict as soon as possible and bring Sudan back to the right track of peace, stability and national development. We appreciate the crucial role played by the Arab League and the African Union as well as the countries in the region in dealing with the situation in Sudan. We note that the parties to the conflict have started the negation process in Saudi Arabia. The international community should earnestly respect Sudan’s sovereignty and the ownership of its affairs, support Sudan in exploring institutional arrangements that suits its national conditions and create a favourable external environment for dialogue to solve the problem. In this context, the discussions and actions by the council concerning the situation in Sudan should help to put out the fire and cool down the temperature, so to speak, and not the opposite. China has always advocated that all parties should solve their differences in the field of human rights through constructive dialogue and cooperation. Therefore, we are not in favour of holding this special session, still less any taking of action at a time when there are still serious differences, which would only have long-term negative impact on the work of the council. Thank you, Mister President.
I thank you, and let me invite Pakistan. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. We are deeply concerned over the evolving situation in Sudan, especially its human, humanitarian and security dimensions. We are saddened over the loss of lives. Our thoughts and solidarity are with the brotherly people of Sudan affected by the ongoing conflict. We reaffirm support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Sudan and we fully support all mediation efforts including by the African Union, League of Arab States, the Quartet and IGAD. We hope the recent meeting in Jeddah facilitated by Saudi Arabia lays the foundation for a durable peace. Mister President, the holding of a special session of the council in our view does not stand up to the broad markers identified in the IB package. We raise this point in terms of principles of objectivity, dialogue and cooperation. This session is also in contradiction to working culture envisaged in HRC Resolution 5/1 such as exercising restraint in proliferation of mandates and avoiding unnecessary duplication of work. In our view, the UN Security Council is already seized of the peace and security dimension of the situation. It has issued a PRST and despite it being vested with the mandate and tools, it has exercised prudence by deferring consideration of the situation till next month. At this stage, mediation efforts must be given primacy to secure ceasefire and facilitate humanitarian assistance. We share concerns over the human rights impacts of the conflict in Sudan. These impacts can, however, best be mitigated when the ongoing conflict is managed first. Sudan has demonstrated consistent cooperation and engagement with the council, OHCHR and human rights human rights experts, including the existing mechanism. Mounting another resolution with novel but unrealistic proposals is deemed unhelpful. After all, many of the asks are hard to be achieved, given the security situation on the ground and the inherent limitations of this Council. In any case, the Human Rights Expert on Sudan is set to present his report, followed by an interactive dialogue, in a few weeks. The call for today's special session and its outcomes, which lack the consent of country concerned on a matter which sequentially falls within the mandate of UN Security Council, risks further exacerbating the situation in Sudan. We call for introspection and to work with the country concerned to promote the shared cause of a peaceful Sudan where human rights are fully respected by all.
Thank you. And now let me invite Chile.
Thank you, President. Chile would like to express its grave concern in light of the dramatic deterioration of the human rights situation in Sudan over the last month since the beginning of the armed conflict between the Rapid Support Forces and the Sudanese Armed Forces on the fifteenth of April. We call on all parties involved to step up their efforts to achieve a ceasefire, to protect the civilian population, enable access for humanitarian aid, and respect the rules of international law, international humanitarian law, and international human rights law. We would like to make a special call for the serious situation of women, children, and displaced persons to be taken into account, especially in light of reports of situations that are posing a threat to their lives and physical integrity, as well as the lack of basic services and cases of sexual and gender-based violence. Such circumstances warrant a robust response from the international community to ensure respect for and protection of human rights in Sudan. Chile would therefore like to express its support for Sudan in its efforts to achieve a peaceful settlement to the conflict, which will allow for lasting peace and the well-being of its population. Therefore, we would like to highlight the constructive role of international organizations in this process, in particular the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights and the special procedures under this Council, which can, of course, work along with other UN agencies and regional mechanisms such as the African Union and the Arab League. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Mexico.
Thank you, President. Mexico would like to express its concern about the deterioration of the humanitarian and human rights situation in the Republic of Sudan. The information about the situation on the ground shows that there is an urgent need for there to be an in-depth discussion within this Council, which is why my country supported the convening of this special session. Mexico recognizes the efforts made by national, regional, and international actors in order to put in place a ceasefire and an end to the conflict. However, in light of the current situation, my country would like to call on all parties to the conflict to immediately cease hostilities and to find a negotiated solution and to resume the process of transition, which will allow for the full implementation of international human rights obligations and obligations under international humanitarian law. Sustainable peace as well as safeguarding human rights, in particular for vulnerable groups, must be the priority. In light of the information received about the human rights situation in the Republic of Sudan, we have carefully analyzed the resolution which is being presented today. We are glad that a progressive approach of existing mechanisms has been adopted. This is something that my country has repeatedly called for within this Council. That said, my country would like to highlight that the emergency of the humanitarian situation or human rights situation in a given country or region should not mean this Council must adopt resolutions that leave aside the establishment of a constructive dialogue with the state concerned, including elements such as its concerns or priorities. Failing to do so not only reduces the effectiveness of proposed mechanisms but also jettisons the spirit of cooperation and respect which should prevail as the guiding thread in this Council's actions to ensure that states can fulfill their human rights obligations and obligations under international humanitarian and human rights law. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker on my list is India.
Thank you, Mr. President. India has longstanding friendly relations with Sudan and its people. Over the years, India has emerged as a development partner of Sudan and has assisted Sudan in implementing several projects through grants and concessional lines of credit, doing capacity building and providing humanitarian assistance. We are closely monitoring the complex and evolving security situation in Sudan. We are concerned over the loss of civilian lives, injuries, and destruction. The conflict has also negatively affected the enjoyment of human rights by people of Sudan. We have been coordinating closely with various partners for the safe movement of those Indians who were impacted by the conflict and wanted to be evacuated, and we have been able to safely evacuate about four thousand Indian nationals as well as nationals of other countries from Sudan in coordination with our partners. India has been consistently underscoring the importance of mutual trust, engagement, dialogue, and reconciliation to resolve the conflict in Sudan. We have urged all sides to exercise restraint and work together to build trust and confidence, which would pave the way for dialogue and transition towards a civilian-led government. Peace and stability in Sudan is of utmost importance for India, for the entire African continent, and for the world. Mr. President, India hopes to see Sudan emerge as a prosperous, peaceful, and stable country, and towards that objective, we will continue to support Sudan and its people. We remain confident that the people of Sudan will overcome the current challenges and make progress towards securing a stable and prosperous future. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you. And now let me invite Senegal.
Thank you, President. Senegal expresses full solidarity with Sudan and its people. My delegation remains deeply concerned by the fresh outbreak of violence in some regions of the country, leading to mass population displacement, destruction of property and infrastructure, and loss of human life. This situation imperils the extensive efforts made towards peace and stability in Sudan and requires special attention from the international community in this regard. Senegal welcomes regional mediation initiatives taken by IGAD, supported by the African Union, and a group of states, including Saudi Arabia, the UAE, the United Kingdom, and the United States. We also call on the parties involved in the conflict to be fully committed to dialogue and an immediate cessation of hostilities, as well as complete respect for human rights and civilian protection, including protection of the most vulnerable. My country further calls on the Council and the international community to provide Sudan with the necessary assistance to respond to urgent humanitarian needs of conflict-affected populations and to restore security and stability throughout the territory. In conclusion, while commending Sudan's ongoing collaboration with the Council's mechanisms, Senegal reaffirms its commitment to a peaceful and lasting settlement to this conflict within the framework of constructive dialogue with the country concerned. I thank you.
Vietnam, you have the floor.
Mr. President, Vietnam shares the international community's concerns about the conflict situation in Sudan and urges all parties to cease fire, observe international humanitarian law, ensure access to humanitarian aid, and safeguard civilians and essential infrastructure vital to human life. The immediate priority is finding a solution to end the conflict. The efforts of the international community should contribute to this goal within the most appropriate security, peace, and humanitarian frameworks, consistent with international law and the Charter of the United Nations. Vietnam believes that conflict resolution requires the participation of Sudanese stakeholders and the promotion of the role of the international and regional organization. An armed conflict related to international peace and security should be discussed in an appropriate mechanism. We reiterate our consistent position that Vietnam does not support country-specific resolutions that lack the consent of the concerned country and opposes the politicization of human rights issues as a tool to interfere in the internal affairs of a country, which is inconsistent with international law and the principles set forth in the UN Charter. Vietnam strongly believes that the optimal way to promote and protect human rights is through genuine dialogue and cooperation. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And we continue with Costa Rica.
Thank you, President. Costa Rica is deeply concerned by the swift deterioration of the situation of human rights in Sudan. My country, true to and consistent with its commitments as a member of this Council, would like to reiterate its principled position, which is that human rights are universal, indivisible, and interdependent, and that no country, region, or situation is above the scrutiny of the Human Rights Council. Therefore, we have since the beginning supported the convening of this special session, which is in keeping with the mandate of this UN specialized body. The conflict in Sudan has resulted in multiple challenges for human rights, including violations of the right to life and freedom and safety of persons, as well as the right to education, access to water and sanitation, to healthcare and basic needs, and the right to labor, amongst others. The hostilities have exacerbated the human rights crisis of the internally displaced persons and refugees, affecting also neighboring countries. Women and children are particularly vulnerable to sexual and gender-based violence during armed conflicts. In this case, there have been reports of rape and children recruited by the armed forces and used as child soldiers. In light of the gravity of the situation on the ground, the Human Rights Council has the unavoidable responsibility of responding to these multiple challenges, amongst other things, ensuring appropriate accountability for human rights violations committed during the conflict by all parties. Impunity perpetuates the cycle of violence and makes it more difficult for victims to obtain justice and reparation, and it prevents the people of Sudan from moving towards reconciliation and lasting peace. Costa Rica calls on all parties to immediately cease all hostilities, to respect their international human rights obligations and international humanitarian law, and to cooperate with this Council, with the ICC, the efforts of the international community, regional organizations, and civil society, in order to ensure accountability, human rights, and the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you. And we continue with Luxembourg.
Thank you, President. Luxembourg aligns itself with the statement of the European Union and welcomes the convening of this special session. We express our full solidarity with the people of Sudan, who have been paying a heavy price since the fifteenth of April, when clashes broke out between the armed forces of General Al-Buhan and the RSF, led by General Dagalo. The disregard of the warring sides for the security of civilians and for IHL is flagrant. This disregard is the direct consequence of many years of impunity. As noted by the High Commissioner, the current fighting is a result of a personal tussle for power between the two generals, who dismiss legitimate democratic aspirations of the population. This Council met for a special session in November twenty twenty-one to address the military coup d'etat carried out by these same two men the previous month. At the time, they had the shared goal of putting an end to the democratic transition that had followed a peaceful and popular revolution in Sudan. The humanitarian situation in the country is devastating, with hundreds of thousands of displaced and hundreds of civilians killed. My delegation joins others in demanding that the parties to the conflict fully reflect their obligations under international human rights law and international humanitarian law, especially when it comes to protection of civilians. They must, above all, refrain from using explosive weapons in densely populated areas. The parties to the conflict must allow for unfettered access of humanitarian aid. We also call for protection of human rights defenders, including women human rights defenders specifically, who have been threatened for their calls for peace and accountability. The time has come to place the interests of the Sudanese people at the forefront and for an undelayed return to the democratic transition while highlighting violations and abuses of human rights, while putting an end to the cultural impunity that has led to the current conflict. This is why Luxembourg supports the resolution tabled before us, which seeks to bolster the mandate of the expert, and calls on the OHCHR to keep the Council informed of the situation in Sudan. We call on all Council members to do likewise. I thank you.
Now let me invite South Africa.
Thank you, Mr. President. We thank the High Commissioner for his candid, yet grave, statement on the human rights situation in Sudan. At the outset, allow me to express my delegation's solidarity with the people of Sudan, who have been subjected to unimaginable suffering since the outbreak of hostilities on fifteen April twenty twenty-three. The injuries, hurt, deprivation suffered, and the deaths of innocent civilians, including children, together with untold damages that have been inflicted on the civilian infrastructure, is of grave concern. Indeed, the significant escalation in the conflict is serving to unleash a humanitarian catastrophe in a country which was already in a precarious humanitarian situation. This has in turn created a new wave of humanitarian challenges which are threatening to engulf the whole region. It is for this reason that South Africa joins those voices today, which are urging the parties to the conflict to reach agreement on an unconditional and lasting ceasefire in order to address the dire humanitarian situation in the country. This ceasefire is an absolute and overriding priority, as it is fundamental to the establishment of humanitarian corridors necessary for unhindered humanitarian access and the evacuation of injured civilians. These corridors are also essential to addressing the rehabilitation of critical infrastructure, including water, electricity, and in ensuring civilians are able to have access to these services. South Africa therefore welcomes the talks that are currently taking place in Jeddah for this purpose, together with the ongoing regional efforts being deployed by IGAD under the auspices of the EU. These efforts will no doubt go a long way in securing the resumption of the political process through dialogue and negotiations towards the establishment of an inclusive, democratic, transitional civilian-led government, which the people of Sudan have long yearned for. These regional efforts also underscore the importance of the application of the principle of complementarity and subsidiarity in ensuring that those who are directly affected by the conflict take the lead in determining its resolution. In this regard, it is important that the initiative that we undertake at the Council today serves to bolster the regional efforts to restore peace in Sudan, to resolve the conflict, as well as to stabilize the situation and silence the guns in the country. Even at this late hour, we urge this Council to speak with one voice on the situation that is unfolding.
And now let me invite Kyrgyzstan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kyrgyzstan hails the noble efforts of our brothers from the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia and those of the United States to restore peace and respect to human lives and human rights in Sudan. According to the reliable reports, the chances are high that today a ceasefire might be reached in Jeddah. That would allow the immediate delivery of emergency humanitarian assistance, which we believe is the most important immediate task. We believe that today's deliberations and the fact of the convening this session did already greatly contribute to the cause of reaching a ceasefire, which is crucial and indispensable for restoring respect to the human rights in Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let me invite Qatar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We would like to align ourselves with the statements of the groups to which we belong. Our country reiterates its determination to promote and protect human rights in Sudan and our determined position regarding the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Sudan. We reiterate our solidarity with the Sudanese people in these dire circumstances that require joining national and regional and international efforts in order to restore peace and stability in this brotherly country. My country is following up with concern the developments in Sudan and recall upon all parties to resort to the voice of reason, to restraint, to give priority to public interest, and to do everything possible to save the civilians from the impact of this conflict. We hope that this crisis will be solved through dialogue and peaceful settlement. We commend all international and regional efforts deployed currently in order to end this crisis, namely the negotiations and talks taking place in the city of Jeddah under the US-Saudi initiative aiming at reaching under the US-Saudi initiative aiming at reaching a lasting ceasefire and allowing humanitarian assistance access to civilians. We hope the success of these talks will lead to a real peaceful and lasting settlement of this crisis. We call, we invite all parties to resort to the aspirations of the Sudanese people, their aspirations to peace, stability and prosperity. We invite the OHCHR and the High Commissioner to provide the technical assistance to help the Sudanese government to fulfill its duties in terms of protecting and promoting human rights. We call upon the international community to provide urgent humanitarian assistance and to support the Sudanese people under these difficult circumstances. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and now let me invite Eritrea.
Thank you, Mr. President. From the outset, Eritrea believes bringing to an immediate end the present conflict in Sudan is an urgent necessity. In this sense, the present conflict could be seen in relation to the undesirable trend followed by the political process of nation-building introduced with the politicization of Islam after the advent of NIF in power three decades ago. The Popular Movement of 2019, supported by the army, was intended to rectify and address distortions created by NIF misrule. Hence, charting actions to the transitional phase to a new political dispensation should continue to the solemn and decisive task of the people of Sudan, who is able to resolve difficulties of higher magnitude. Regional efforts by IGAD aim at complementing homegrown solutions are also welcome. While we acknowledge then the need to respect for human rights, Eritrea vehemently oppose the continued meddling by some foreign countries and entities in the internal affairs of Sudan in the context of human rights. Thus, any initiative by the HRC should take the above stance in consideration and avoid politicization of human rights. Furthermore, the focus is made on addressing the root causes and solutions. It should be important to grant follow-up on the protection of human rights in the prevailing crisis through the existing established mechanism of human rights. Thank you.
Thank you, and the last member speaking is Cote d'Ivoire on behalf of African states. Microphone please and start again.
My apologies. President, I have the honour of delivering this statement on behalf of the Africa Group. The Africa Group is following the crisis in Sudan, and we stand in solidarity with the Sudanese people in these difficult times. We are convinced that this poses a threat to peace and human development as a whole in the region, and we support the convening of the special session, and we regret, though, that it did not receive the necessary attention from other states. We support the idea of African solutions for African problems. Therefore, we commend the mediation efforts of IGAD under the auspices of the African Union. We commend all the additional efforts that are made through deployments by regional stakeholders, and the council should step up its peaceful initiatives alongside with IGAD. We believe that peace is the utmost priority, so a ceasefire is of the essence so as to ensure the provision of humanitarian assistance which people so desperately need in the conflict-affected areas. We call for political conciliation. We call for the negotiations under the auspices of Saudi Arabia and the United States to continue so as to uphold a ceasefire. We would like to underscore our constant support for the sovereignty and independence of Sudan, as well as the importance of dialogue and cooperation in order to protect and promote human rights. And we call for all necessary support to be given to Sudan, including political, economic, technical and development assistance, so as to help the country overcome the difficulties of a transition process. We call on all parties in Sudan to continue dialogue so as to find a consensus-based solution to the political impasse in Sudan and to lead the country towards a peaceful transition towards democracy. We welcome the cooperation from the Sudanese government with the Expert of the United Nations on Sudan, and we call for this cooperation to continue. We call for the Office of the High Commissioner to continue its support to the Sudanese country and to take into account the needs and demands of the country concerned. Thank you.
We will now continue with the list of speakers for observant states of the council. The speaking time will be one minute and thirty seconds, and the first observant state on my list is Liechtenstein. Liechtenstein, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Liechtenstein has been among the delegations that have supported the request for this special session since we are concerned about the outbreak of hostilities on fifteen April 2023 and its subsequent escalation of violence. In particular, we are concerned about reports of serious violations of international humanitarian law, including the numerous reports of conflict-related sexual and gender-based violence, attacks against humanitarian personnel and civilians, and looting and destruction of civilian or humanitarian property. The outbreak of hostility has led to a significant rise of people in need of humanitarian assistance and hundreds of thousands of people fleeing the violence, putting additional strain on the region. It has also severely impacted the enjoyment of human rights, including the right to life, to food and to health. We urge the parties to the conflict to lay down their weapons and to immediately return the country to its civilian-led government. It is our joint obligation to ensure accountability for violations of international humanitarian and human rights law and to support the Sudanese people in their plight for sustainable peace, democracy and a full enjoyment of their human rights. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I'd mean my Australia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Australia welcomes the special session on Sudan at this vital time for the Sudanese people. Australia condemns the ongoing violence between the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces, which has resulted in the needless deaths of hundreds and injury to many thousands. Reports of widespread human rights abuses and violations, including sexual and gender-based violence, are deeply troubling, as are attacks on diplomats, humanitarian officials and the premises of international organisations. We urge all parties to the conflict to uphold international humanitarian law and protect civilians. Sudan is heading for a humanitarian catastrophe. All parties must ensure urgent humanitarian support reaches those in need and afford all necessary protections to health and humanitarian workers as they seek to alleviate the widespread suffering. We commend the efforts of the international community in seeking to negotiate a permanent truce, including recent talks between the parties in Jeddah. Australia urges all parties to the conflict to permanently cease hostilities and to engage in meaningful negotiations. A negotiated solution, including a pathway to civilian rule, is the only way forward for the people of Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you, and passing the floor to Japan.
Thank you, Mr. Japan is greatly concerned about the situation in Sudan that undermined the transition to civilian rule based on the Constitutional Declaration following the outbreak of hostilities and the significant escalation of violence across the country since fifteenth April. Japan is also deeply concerned about the worsening humanitarian situation and the cause for all actors to stop the violence immediately. Japan intends to provocatively address the issue of Sudan, including through the engagement facilitated by its ambassador, Special Envoy for the Forum of Africa. Furthermore, as Prime Minister Kishida stated during his visit to Africa last week, in order to respond to the worsening humanitarian situation in Sudan and its neighbouring countries, Japan stands ready to provide emergency humanitarian assistance to refugee in neighbouring countries and to internally displace persons in cooperation with international organisations. Japan strongly hopes that long-term stability will be achieved in Sudan and that human rights will be protected. Japan, together with G7 and other like-minded countries, intends to support Sudanese efforts toward the restoration of the transition to civilian rule in colours, comparison with the region countries and other stakeholders. I thank you.
Thank you. Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Chair. The Republic of Korea is deeply concerned over the ongoing armed conflict between the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces, which has caused a devastating impact on the humanitarian situation in Sudan. Since the outbreak of the hostilities, we have witnessed heavy fighting and airstrikes in populated areas, resulting in more than five hundred deaths and forcing tens of thousands to flee. It is also troubling that a large number of civilians have been caught in the crossfire with limited access to food, water and electricity. We call on all parties to immediately cease all hostilities and allow safe passage for civilians in compliance with international humanitarian law. My delegation is also troubled by the tragic humanitarian situation in Sudan. The fragile security condition and attacks against aid workers continue to hamper humanitarian operations, leaving millions of people without lifesaving assistance. Unhindered humanitarian access and the safety of humanitarian workers must be fully ensured. In order to avert a further deterioration of the crisis, it is crucial for all parties to silence the guns and return to negotiation with table. With its full support for the ongoing mediation efforts, the Republic of Korea reaffirmed its steadfast commitment to restoring peace in Sudan and its democratic transition. I thank you.
Thank you. Monaco, you have the floor.
The Principality of Monaco strongly condemns the human rights violations currently ongoing in Sudan, and we express our solidarity with the Sudanese people. Since the fifteenth of April 2023, the security situation has been deteriorating in a drastic way. The escalation of violence that we are witnessing has already cost the lives of hundreds of people. Over the last three weeks, intense fighting has displaced several hundreds of thousands of civilians. It has led to destruction of key public health infrastructure and is threatening to worsen the already severe food insecurity in the country. In this regard, the Principality of Monaco calls for a return to conditions that allow for immediate and unhindered access of humanitarian aid to the populations affected by the conflict. My delegation also calls on all the parties involved to put an end to the violence and to seek a political and negotiated solution so as to resume the democratic transition that was underway. In light of how serious the situation is, Monaco supported the convening of this special session and decided to cosponsor the resolution being put before the council. We believe it is vital to strengthen the mandate of the expert on human rights in Sudan and for the council to be kept regularly appraised of developments in the country. Thank you.
Merci vous. Bulgaria.
Mr. President, Bulgaria lines with the EU statement and supports the convening of this special session for the following reasons. The outbreak of hostilities in the Sudan between the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces and the escalation of violence across the country have led to the death of hundreds of civilians, thousands of injured, mass internal and external displacement, thus unfolding a human rights crisis and a dramatic deterioration of the humanitarian situation. Bulgaria condemns all reported abuses and violations of human rights and of international humanitarian law committed by all parties to the conflict and insists that further violations be immediately stopped. We appeal to all actors in the Sudan to take effective measures for the protection of civilians, foreign nationals, health and humanitarian workers, and of the staff of the UN and other international organisations, and ensure safe and unhindered humanitarian assistance and access to all those in need with a focus on vulnerable groups such as IDPs, women, children, the elderly and the disabled. Bulgaria urges all parties to the conflict in Sudan to immediately cease hostilities and engage in urgent talks to resolve the current crisis. We call on all parties in the Sudan to resume the political process aimed at appointing a transitional civilian government and holding elections at a later stage, and strongly support all regional and international efforts to that end. We believe that the promotion and the protection of human rights, the rule of law and accountability for all violations and crimes committed will be a solid foundation for a lasting solution to the current crisis. I thank you.
Thank you, and I'm passing the floor to the Holy See.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Holy See has been following with deep concern the developments of the grave situation of conflict and violence that has been unfolding in Sudan. As the suffering of the people and humanitarian needs increase, the Holy See wishes to assure once again its spiritual closeness, prayers and solidarity with the Sudanese people, especially the displaced and the refugees. The Holy See is particularly concerned with the grave humanitarian and human rights implications of the conflict and urges all parties to suspend armed attacks and ensure access to basic and essential services for the civilian population wherever they are needed, which includes allowing the safe delivery of humanitarian assistance. In this regard, the Holy See hopes that the truce may be extended and be fully respected and that the negotiations between the representatives of all parties in the conflict may result in a fruitful agreement for a ceasefire and for peaceful and durable solutions in the interest of the Sudanese population, as well as to avoid the risk of the violence spread to neighbouring countries, undermining regional peace and security. In conclusion, the Holy See remains confident that dialogue in a spirit of fraternity may bring about a just and lasting peace. This delegation wishes to echo the appeal and prayers of Pope Francis so that arms might be laid down and dialogue prevail in order to return together to the path of peace and harmony. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and now let me invite Indonesia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, today's special session would only be beneficial if the aspiration of Sudan as a country concern were considered. Leading up to this meeting, we heard the position of Sudan. Indonesia echoes their concern and requests for this council to prioritise supporting ceasefire and humanitarian efforts. Ongoing violences must be stopped to protect civilians from further catastrophes. In this hour of need, Indonesia emphasises the following. First, we call for relevant parties to immediately end the violence, declare an immediate ceasefire and return to dialogue. Indonesia supports the ongoing effort by regional and other international actors. We emphasise that inclusive political dialogue is essential toward a democratic transition process. Second, we urge the international community to strengthen coordination and ensure adequate resources for humanitarian responses. The present authorities continue to ensure unimpeded and safe humanitarian corridor to deliver aid and evacuate civilians, prioritising women and children and members of diplomatic missions. Third, we reiterate the importance of delivering technical assistance and response to Sudan needs and priorities. The council should continuously provide capacity building in the field of human rights in support of an inclusive national reconciliation process. Indonesia stands ready to support the people of Sudan and their journey toward peace and prosperity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank you. Kingdom of the Netherlands.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Kingdom of the Netherlands aligns itself with the EU statement, and we thank the core group for taking the initiative for this special session on Sudan. The Netherlands strongly supports the decision to enhance the mandate of the High Commissioner's designated expert. The Netherlands is gravely concerned by the use of violence by both the Rapid Support Forces and the Sudanese Armed Forces against civilians and healthcare workers. An estimated seventy per cent of the hospitals in Khartoum are closed because of the targeted attacks and shortage of supplies. The Netherlands therefore strongly condemns these violent violations of international humanitarian law, preventing people from basic rights such as access to food, water and care. The ongoing abuses and violations need to be documented and the evidence collected preserved so that perpetrators on both sides can be held accountable for their crimes. We urge both the SAF and the RSF to end this conflict immediately and fully abide by ceasefire efforts. Mr. High Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, all efforts should be focused on ending these human rights and international humanitarian law violations and create safe corridors to provide humanitarian aid. The Netherlands is ready to support all efforts to obtain a solution and reaffirms its solidarity with the people of Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you. Brazil is the next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brazil is closely following the human rights situations in Sudan. We are very concerned about the unparalleled level of violence since the outbreak of the clashes on April fifteenth and its impacts on human rights. We commend the seven neighbouring countries of Sudan for keeping their borders open and receiving displaced persons. The attacks on civilians, civilian facilities, including hospitals and schools, and the looting of offices of civil society and international organisations, as well as diplomatic missions, are unacceptable. We reiterate our call for full respect by all bodies to international humanitarian law and the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-one. We reiterate our call for immediate cessation of hostilities that could allow unimpeded access to humanitarian assistance. We support the efforts of the African Union, the Intergovernmental Authority for Development, the League of Arab States, the United Nations and its Security Council in seeking lasting solutions. the League of Arab States, the United Nations, and its Security Council in seeking lasting political solutions for the ongoing crisis. Recalling the nineteen, two thousand and nineteen constitutional declaration and the framework agreement of two thousand and twenty-two, we hope for the achievement of a political understanding leading to the return to a civilian-led government with full respect for human rights in Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm inviting Peru.
Thank you, President. Peru supports the convening of this special session of the Council on the human rights impact in of the situation in Sudan in light of the severe armed conflict affecting the country. We deeply lament the tragic loss of hundreds of lives, including of children and young people, as well as reports of sexual aggression against Sudanese women. Peru agrees with what was said by the High Commissioner, Volker Turk, regarding the immediate ceasefire. This is of vital significance, and we urge the parties to the conflict to immediately end hostilities and to comply with international humanitarian law. We urge the parties to the conflict to respect human rights, to protect the civilian population, and to enforce the right to justice for everyone and ensure accountability for violations. We call on the international community to step up its efforts to support dialogue in favor of a ceasefire so as to meet the needs of the Sudanese people for a peaceful and democratic future in which their human rights are respected. Thank you.
Thank you. Switzerland, you have the floor.
Monsieur le Président. President, Switzerland supports the convening of this special session and the extension of the mandate of the expert appointed by the OHCHR for Sudan. We are seriously concerned by the violent clashes taking place in Sudan since the fifteenth of April. We call on the parties to the conflict to reach an immediate ceasefire to enable speedy and unhindered humanitarian access and to allow for dialogue to be resumed. My country is alarmed by the disastrous humanitarian consequences caused by the conflict, which has already cost the lives of hundreds of civilians and forced the displacement of tens of thousands of people. We condemn violations of IHL and international and human rights law, including attacks on hospitals. We urge the parties to the conflict to take all measures required to protect the civilian population. Maintaining the internet connection is also crucial to ensure that persons affected can communicate with their relatives and access reliable information and products of basic necessity and information about safe evacuation routes. Finally, Switzerland affirms its support for efforts of mediation by the international community, including by neighboring states, partners in the region, the UN, the African Union, and IGAD. We call on the parties to the conflict to cooperate fully with these stakeholders, to put an end to the hostilities, and find a lasting political solution. Thank you.
Is Uruguay.
Gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, President. Uruguay views with concern the ongoing deterioration of the situation in the Republic of Sudan. This is aggravated by the clashes between the Rapid Support Forces and the Sudanese Armed Forces, which is worsening a negative picture which also affects respect for human rights. We condemn attacks against civilians and civilian infrastructure, and we are horrified by the increasing death toll and the number of wounded people and people forced to flee a context of violence and danger. We are concerned by difficulties for humanitarian assistance, as well as the continuous reports of physical and sexual violence against women and girls and boys. In light of this situation, the Council must respond. It must respond within its remit to ensure that there are no new victims. On this basis, Uruguay cosponsored the convening of this special session. Similarly, we support the call from the High Commissioner for an immediate cessation of hostilities and for the prompt launching of investigations. We urge all of the parties involved to find a settlement for this crisis through peaceful means to ensure full respect for human rights and international humanitarian law. Finally, we urge them to cooperate with this Council and with the Office of the High Commissioner and with the appointed expert. Thank you. I give the floor to Ecuador.
Thank you, President. Ecuador is taking part in this special session with great dismay in light of the violence in Sudan and the resurgence of hostilities since the fifteenth of April, which have triggered an alarming humanitarian crisis. We deplore all actions that accounted to human rights and international humanitarian law, including attacks against humanitarian workers and civilian infrastructure, especially hospitals and airports. We also lament the loss of hundreds of lives, including those of women and children during the fighting between the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces. We also deplore the increase in sexual and gender-based violence. We urge for international human rights law and international humanitarian law to be respected. We call for humanitarian corridors to be established for the evacuation of civilians and for the safety of humanitarian staff to be ensured. Also, it is vital to address the critical situation of internally displaced persons in the Darfur and also of women and girls fleeing violence. Ecuador echoes the call for the parties to the conflict to immediately cease hostilities and to resume dialogue in order to resolve the crisis in Sudan in a way that is respectful of human rights and democratic principles. Finally, we believe it is vital to support regional and international efforts to return the country to a path of transition towards a constitutional order. Thank you.
Thank you, and now let me invite Croatia.
Mr. President, Croatia aligns itself with the EU statement. The gravity, scale, and complexity of current crisis in Sudan is manifested in a high level of civilian casualties, displacement, destruction, migration, and suffering of the most vulnerable parts of the population, including women and children. Croatia strongly condemns the ongoing military attacks motivated by the struggle for power. We call upon all actors in Sudan to ensure protection of civilians, including against sexual and gender-based violence. We call upon all parties to the conflict to immediately stop the hostilities and refrain from further violations and abuses of human rights and to cease the violations of international humanitarian law. We emphasize the important role of the civil society whose peaceful struggle and sacrifice for democracy should get more prominence at the international support. Mr. President, it is imperative to ensure ceasefire, humanitarian access, and corridors for the evacuation of civilians. We call upon Sudan to ensure meaningful domestic accountability for all violations and abuses. Sudan is, of course, is of crucial importance for the stability and of the entire North-East Africa. The lives of millions are at stake. The worst is yet to come, it seems, and we should do our utmost to prevent it. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next speaker is Bolivia, Republic of Venezuela. You have the floor.
Gracias, presidente.
Thank you, President. Venezuela is concerned by the conflict in Sudan, and we deeply lament the loss of life and the difficult humanitarian situation. The convening of this special session and the resolution that is being put forward by the cosponsors does not have the consent of the state concerned. It ignores regional initiatives currently underway in order to achieve a ceasefire and advance peace. It would be prudent to support the efforts of the Arab League and the African Union in addressing this situation with the consent of the country concerned. Venezuela believes it is necessary to support these important initiatives, which are conducive to effective protection and promotion of human rights. Once again, we call on our peace-minded diplomacy. We call for any action that might lead to an escalation to cease. My country is a firm defender of the principles and goals of the Charter, and we call for dialogue between the parties in order to preserve life, human rights, and establish stability in the country and the region. We reaffirm our firm commitment to the supreme values of peace, friendship, and solidarity between the world's nations, and we will continue to advocate a peaceful settlement of disputes on the basis of the universal principles of respect for sovereignty and non-interference in internal affairs of states enshrined in the UN Charter. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Malta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Malta aligns itself with the statement of the European Union. Malta expresses deep concern regarding the current human rights situation in Sudan. We deeply regret that much of the fighting has been concentrated in heavily populated parts of Khartoum and residential areas elsewhere in the country, which has exposed civilians to death and injury. We also regret the intense clashes in several states in Darfur that resulted in considerable fatalities, injuries, and heavy infrastructural damage. We are also concerned with the ensuing precarious humanitarian situation experienced by those trapped and displaced by the fighting, who are unable to access basic services, medical care, food, and water. We call on both parties to the conflict to ensure respect for their obligations under international humanitarian and human rights law and the protection of civilians and civilian infrastructures such as schools and hospitals. Furthermore, we are appalled by the reports of sexual and gender-based violence and call on both parties to the conflict to take all necessary measures to take preventive measures. Malta urges thorough and independent investigations into reported violations and for those responsible to be held accountable. Finally, we call on all parties to de-escalate tensions and to put shared interest of the Sudanese people first. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and we continue with Cyprus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cyprus aligns itself with the statement by the European Union. Since the outbreak of hostilities, the human rights and the humanitarian situation in Sudan has rapidly deteriorated, especially impacting women and girls. We urge all parties to the conflict to mediate cease hostilities and to fully respect their obligations under international law. There is an urgent need to provide immediate humanitarian assistance to the people of Sudan. The deliberate denial and obstruction of humanitarian Cyprus supports regional and international efforts to implement a lasting and sustainable ceasefire agreement, and we welcome all mediation efforts towards this end. Furthermore, the efforts by neighboring states that have kept their borders open and are assisting refugees must not go unnoticed. Beyond the imperative of a lasting ceasefire, a national reconciliation process, and the formation of an inclusive government promoting accountability and paving the way for the democratic transition of Sudan is an integral part of the overall solution. During evacuation efforts from Sudan undertaken recently, Cyprus was a safe transit hub, and we shall continue to contribute whenever needed by the international community in humanitarian evacuation efforts. I thank you.
Thank you, and I'm inviting Ethiopia.
Mr. President, Ethiopia aligns itself with the statement delivered by the representative of Cordavois on behalf of the African Group and would like to make the following remarks. Ethiopia, as a neighboring country, is gravely concerned over the ongoing fighting and appeals to both parties of the conflict to stop the fighting and allow humanitarian relief and assistance to the people that are in need. Ethiopia underscores that there can only be a political solution to the crisis and advocates for its resolution on the basis of the principle of African solutions to African problems. In this regard, Ethiopia's recent peace agreement to resolve the conflict in the northern part of the country can serve as a useful example. Accordingly, we stress on the importance of giving priority to existing regional and continental mechanisms to resolve the crisis, namely the efforts of IGAD under the auspices of the African Union. Proliferation of initiatives and mandates is counterproductive. In this connection, we find this special session to be untimely. Any new mechanism to be successful should be owned by the Sudanese themselves and be based on the consent of the concerned country on the basis of the principle of complementarity. We emphasize on the respect of Sudan's national sovereignty, territorial integrity, and political independence. Finally, we wish to express our solidarity with the brotherly people of Sudan at this difficult time. I thank you.
Thank you, and the next speaker is Ireland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ireland aligns with the statement of the EU. We are deeply concerned by the devastating consequences of this latest phase of conflict in a country already facing severe human rights, humanitarian, and economic challenges as a result of the military coup of October, two thousand and twenty-one. Ireland condemns all attacks on local and international humanitarian personnel and humanitarian assets. The targeting of health workers, lawyers, journalists, community organizers, and human rights defenders, as well as reprisals against civilians who urge an end to the war or refuse to support attainment of military objectives, must end. Their work is critical to both the immediate and long-term protection of human rights in Sudan. We urge the parties to facilitate immediate and unconditional humanitarian access and protection in line with obligations under international law. With fighting concentrated in urban areas and use of explosive and aerial weaponry, IDP settlements, hospitals, schools, and vital civilian infrastructure have all been the target of attack. UNICEF reports that seven children are killed or injured each hour. Hundreds of thousands have been displaced. The work of OHCHR and the designated expert are vital to both preventing and ensuring accountability for human rights violations. Ireland supports the strengthening of monitoring and reporting. We call on this Council to speak with a united voice against this reckless violence and in solidarity with the Sudanese people and their demands for a peaceful and democratic future. I thank you.
Thank you. Italy.
Mr. President, Italy aligns itself with the statement of the European Union. Italy is deeply concerned about the deterioration of the human rights situation in Sudan following the outbreak of hostilities on fifteenth of April, which have already caused a death toll of hundreds and thousands of injured. We are also gravely concerned about the exacerbation of the already dire humanitarian situation in the country, as well as the sharp increase of internally displaced persons and refugees in neighboring countries. Italy calls on all actors involved to immediately end the armed confrontations, protect civilians, and refrain from attacks on civilian infrastructures, including medical and education facilities, as well to enable rapid, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access. Italy welcomes and supports all mediation efforts, including by the UN, the African Union, IGAD, and the League of Arab States, to achieve a lasting ceasefire and resume an inclusive political dialogue with a view to establishing a transitional civilian government. We also appreciate the joint initiative by the US and Saudi Arabia that led to preliminary talks in Jeddah between representatives of the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces. Italy stands in solidarity with the people of Sudan, whose aspirations for a peaceful and democratic future deserve the full support of the international community. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Israel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Israel is concerned over the recent events in Sudan and the implications of the ongoing hostilities which began on fifteenth of April, two thousand and twenty-three. Israel calls on all parties to show restraint and to refrain from attacks on the civilian population. In addition, Israel calls on all parties to return to the path of internal reconciliation in order to conclude the process of governmental transition with a wide consensus. Mr. President, since fighting erupted in the country, Israel has been operating via various channels to reach a permanent ceasefire and welcomes several ceasefire agreements reached in the last few weeks. Israel urges all parties to respect them and reach a peaceful solution. I thank you.
Thank you, and now let me invite New Zealand.
Mr. President, New Zealand is deeply concerned by the alarming human rights situation in Sudan. The many hundreds killed, thousands wounded, and hundreds of thousands displaced are grim testimony to the toll the conflict has already taken on the people of Sudan. But these numbers tell only part of the story. The destruction wrought by the fighting has thrown the population into a humanitarian crisis, stands in the way of Sudan's transition to democracy, and imperils the human rights of the Sudanese people. New Zealand urges the parties to the conflict to negotiate and adhere to a ceasefire to alleviate human suffering, particularly by allowing access for humanitarian aid and with a view to agreeing a long-term negotiated peaceful settlement enabling the transition to civilian-led government. Mr. President, reports of human rights violations and abuses by the combatants to the conflict, including reports of sexual and gender-based violence, are deeply disturbing. It is therefore entirely appropriate that the Human Rights Council is holding this special session. New Zealand supports the resolution, which enhances the existing mandate of the High Commissioner's designated expert on human rights in the Sudan and is complementary to other international and regional efforts towards peace in Sudan. We urge all Council members to support its adoption. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and now let me invite Egypt.
Mr. President, my delegation aligns itself with the statements of the Arab and African groups. In our national capacity, we would like to express Egypt's solidarity with the brotherly Sudanese people with whom we have historical relations as a neighboring state. Egypt is attached to stabilizing the political and security situation and to respond quickly to the humanitarian needs in the Sudan, and therefore we stress the need for an immediate and comprehensive ceasefire in order to preserve the wealth of the brotherly Sudanese people and institutions of the Sudanese state. We are making strenuous efforts to facilitate the arrival of people from Sudan through border crossings and to provide them with humanitarian assistance and necessary medical services. We urge all international organizations and UN agencies working in the humanitarian field to redouble their efforts and to provide necessary assistance to alleviate the suffering of the Sudanese people. We seize this opportunity to reaffirm our principled position rejecting the convening of council meetings on the human rights situation in states of council meetings on the human rights situation in states, the establishment of mechanisms to follow up the situation or to expand the mandate of the mechanisms already in place without the consent of the country concerned, especially if this country is already cooperating with the council and its various mechanisms. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, and I'm inviting Slovenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Slovenia aligns itself with the EU statement. We are deeply concerned by the human rights situation in Sudan. For decades, Sudan has provided shelter for internally displaced persons as well as for refugees from the region. Despite conflicts in some parts of the country, a significant part remained peaceful. Following the outbreak of hostilities since 15 April 2023, many civilians have been killed, injured or displaced; civilian infrastructure has been destroyed. The ongoing fighting between the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces threatens the safety and security of people of Sudan and undermines the transition towards a civilian-led transitional government. We condemn any attacks on humanitarian workers and civil society organizations and call on all parties to the conflict to comply with their obligations under international law, including international human rights law and international humanitarian law. We call on parties to the conflict to immediately cease hostilities without preconditions and to work on a political solution to end the ongoing conflict. I thank you.
Thank you. Iraq is the next.
Iraq aligns with the statement by the Arab Group and the statements of the regional and political groups it belongs to. We are concerned about the evolving situation in Sudan, and we express our solidarity with the people of Sudan. President, Iraq reiterates its position of principle, that there needs to be an immediate ceasefire and that there needs to be a delivery of humanitarian aid. We support Arab initiatives to encourage both sides to the conflict to relaunch dialogue, to put an end to this dangerous crisis and to prevent any escalation so that the paramount interest of the people of Sudan can prevail. In conclusion, Iraq expresses its support for the territorial integrity of Sudan and warns against any foreign intervention which could destabilize the region. And we call for a rejection of violence to protect civilian life. I thank you.
Thank you, and now I would like to invite Zimbabwe.
We associate ourselves with the Africa Group's statement. Like others who have spoken before us, we express our full solidarity with the people of Sudan. At this extremely challenging time, we deplore the loss of life and the wanton destruction of critical infrastructure. Our collective priority, Mr. President, must be to end the fighting and to ensure secure pathways for the immediate delivery of humanitarian assistance. With regard to ongoing mediation efforts, we stress that due regard should be given to the principle of subsidiarity, and in this regard, we are fully supportive of regional mediation efforts by IGAD, the League of Arab States supported by the African Union, prioritizing human life, the primacy of a ceasefire and the restoration of lasting peace in Sudan. We welcome ongoing negotiations in Jeddah in this direction. We call for the mobilization of urgent humanitarian assistance, especially for the internally displaced, for refugees and indeed for all vulnerable groups. With regard to the resolution before us, Mr. President, we reiterate our concern at the multiplicity of human rights initiatives and the continued resort to country-specific resolutions without the consent of the country concerned. Ignoring or overriding the position of the country concerned, already deeply engaged with existing HR mandates and mechanisms, may prove unhelpful and may actually serve to undermine the effectiveness of this council in the fulfillment of its mandate. I thank you, sir.
I thank you, and now let me invite Saudi Arabia.
The Republic of Sudan and its brotherly people are going through an unprecedented crisis. We in Saudi Arabia are at their side, and we wish to see peace achieved. We call for calm and restraint while the dialogue is ongoing, and we hope that there will be wisdom and that there will be a peaceful dialogue to reach stability, economic recovery and prosperity. Following this conflict, talks began on the 6th of May in Jeddah to strengthen international solidarity by undertaking efforts with the United States and others and the Troika. We welcome these measures to achieve an immediate ceasefire and to enable deliveries of humanitarian aid in order to restore peace and security in Sudan. We believe this is the only way, as other ways would only complicate the situation further. President, my country reaffirms the need to address the humanitarian situation in Sudan and to protect humanitarian aid, to provide for secure corridors for humanitarian aid workers and to evacuate civilians. We have worked towards evacuating more than 8,000 people of 110 nationalities.
Iran, you have the floor.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Mr. President. The Islamic Republic of Iran reiterates its fundamental position on the necessity of respecting national sovereignty, territorial integrity and non-interference in internal affairs of countries as the important principles of international law, which should be taken into account in fulfilling the mandate of the Human Rights Council. We believe strongly that the excessive use of holding special session against developing countries undermine the provisions of the Resolution 60/20 and 2100 and 51, which emphasizes on the principle of non-selectivity, objectivity and impartiality, as well as on the genuine dialogue and cooperation as the main basis of promotion and protection of human rights and strengthening the capacity of member states to comply with their human rights obligations. Human rights issues and the council should not be instrumentalized as a tool of some powers for advancing their political agenda and means of pressure on states and manipulating their internal developments. It's regretful that in this case, some foreign parties seek to play a destructive role by inciting and intensifying the crisis. Holding this special session is part of this negative interventions and will not bring any achievement for parties and people of Sudan. We reemphasize that the only solution is a Sudanese-to-Sudanese dialogue based on internal initiatives. Bearing this in mind, we call on internal parties to stop immediately the military confrontation and look forward to peaceful solution through dialogue. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I'm inviting Russian Federation.
President, we are closely following developments in Sudan. We note a deterioration of the humanitarian situation, a shortage of food and medication in many regions of the country. We call on the parties to the conflict to show political will and to take prompt steps towards a ceasefire. We believe that any disagreements can be settled only at the negotiating table. Following the end to the armed conflict, practical steps must be taken to re-establish the inter-Sudanese dialogue. To ensure that this is inclusive, it is important, in our belief, that this process involve all of the ethnic and religious groups of Sudan as well as prominent regional leaders. We believe that progress in this area would be enabled by achieving a broad national consensus. Russia consistently opposes the politicization of the topic of Sudan in the HRC. Playing up this topic in the council is counterproductive and in fact does not facilitate the settlement of the crisis in the country. Foreign imposition on the Sudanese leadership of dubious socio-economic solutions and universal democratizing templates and also the politicization of economic and financial assistance are unacceptable. We are convinced that the people of Sudan can and must independently resolve domestic problems. The international community and the HRC must provide all assistance in this regard. Thank you.
Invite Norway.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, as part of the core group, Norway welcomes this special session, and as others here today, we strongly condemn the ongoing violence and urge the combatants to agree and adhere to ceasefire immediately. The fighting must stop now. The situation for the civilian population is catastrophic, with enormous humanitarian needs and grave human rights violations. Women and children are again likely to pay the heaviest price. We therefore call on the parties to urgently take measures to fulfill their obligations under international humanitarian law and protect all civilians, including children and humanitarian and health workers. The parties must allow and facilitate safe, unimpended access to humanitarian assistance without delay. Norway supports all efforts aimed at de-escalating, resolving the situation and responding to humanitarian needs. We stand firmly behind the efforts of the Sudanese people to establish a democratic and peaceful future. There needs to be a resumption of the political process through dialogue and negotiations towards the establishment of an inclusive, democratic, transitional, civilian-led government. I thank you.
Thank you, and let me invite Libya.
We align with the statement of the Ab Group and the Africa Group. We reiterate our solidarity with the fraternal country of Sudan in these difficult circumstances, and we stress the importance of upholding the sovereignty and independence of Sudan. And it is also important to reach a ceasefire and enable the delivery of humanitarian aid to alleviate civilian suffering. We support regional efforts to achieve a ceasefire and return the country to the path of a political settlement to re-establish stability and the democratic transition. The US and Saudi initiative, which has led to talks currently ongoing in Jeddah, is welcomed. President, we support the state of Sudan, and we call on you to respect this country's position that it expressed regarding the holding of this session and on the possibility of creating further mechanisms, part of myriad international mechanisms, on the human rights situation in Sudan. This complicates the work of these mechanisms and limits their effectiveness. In conclusion, we call on the High Commissioner to continue providing technical support to Sudan to allow for promotion and protection of human rights.
You have the floor.
Thank you, President. The delegation of Chad aligns with the statement made by the Africa Group. As a neighboring country, Chad wishes to state its full solidarity with Sudan in this terrible trial. President, the Secretary General of the United Nations highlighted that this crisis must not spill over beyond the borders of Sudan and that it must not threaten democratic transitions and the peace processes ongoing in neighboring countries. We welcome this position. While reaffirming our commitment to the principle of subsidiarity, our country does not favor any parallel initiative, any unilateral initiative, which could stimmy current initiatives which are underway. Chad also stresses that the human rights situation in Sudan is already inscribed in the agenda of the 53rd session of the Human Rights Council to be held in June. Chad therefore believes that priority should be given to achieving a ceasefire, which can enable the deployment of humanitarian assistance and stop the mass displacement of populations, which has an impact on immediate neighbors. All of our prayers are with our brothers and sisters in Sudan. I thank you. I thank you, sir, and I give the floor to Niger. Thank you, President. Niger aligns with the statement made by Cortevois on behalf of the Africa Group and wishes to make the following comments in its national capacity. Niger reaffirms its strong commitment to human rights and its opposition to any attack on the sanctity of the human person. However, in this case, we very much question the effectiveness of the special session in the Human Rights Council to discuss the current situation in Sudan. My delegation particularly fears that this session might have a negative impact on the ongoing process, which seeks a return of peace, and on efforts by Sudan to cooperate with human rights mechanisms that already exist. This is an indispensable condition for effective management of the humanitarian situation and for better protection of human rights above all. My delegation also highlights a lack of prior and transparent consultations with the African Group, of which we are president and which we have witnessed up close. Finally, Niger reiterates its support for initiatives by IGAD and others to help Sudan come out of this crisis situation, and we call on other members of the international community to assist in achieving a speedy and lasting ceasefire and to open up humanitarian aid. Thank you, President. The crisis situation in Sudan requires a speedy settlement of the conflict to put an end to violence, restore order and ensure security and safety for civilians. The delegation of Sudan has expressed its position on holding a special session. Ignoring this position bears testimony to a continuing practice in the council of imposing politically motivated solutions against the will of the concerned sovereign countries. We call on countries to refrain from actions which may have a negative impact on the negotiation process and to prevent escalation and settle the situation in the country. We support inter-Sudanese dialogue and stability in this country and also a speedy solving of humanitarian problems. I thank you.
Nigeria, you are the next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nigeria aligns with the statements delivered on behalf of the African Group and that of the government of Sudan to oppose the convening of a special session by this council on the human rights situation in Sudan. We strongly condemn the warts and volleys in killing of innocent civilians, including children. However, the call for this special session is a flagrant disregard of the sovereignty and political independence of Sudan and indeed an outright dismissal of the efforts and commitments of the African Union, IGAD, UN Security Council and other regional mediation efforts to ensure a lasting ceasefire. It is pertinent to highlight that the very decision by some member states to convene this special session without recourse to ongoing continental efforts is obstructive. We have the view that actions such as these only undermine continental mediation efforts, including the robust engagement of Saudi Arabia and UAE. The delegation of Nigeria remains resolute that regardless of the aliases or nomenclature, any attempt to interfere in internal politics of Sudan through the creation of another human rights mandate or mechanism is counterproductive and should never be encouraged nor find room within this council. While recalling the principles of complementarity and subsidiarity, we urge the Human Rights Council to support the government of Sudan in its effort to achieve a peaceful resolution to the conflict by opposing any decision on actions that could complicate the already tense situation in the country. We therefore call on member states of this extreme council to support the ongoing efforts to return Sudan to transition process and constitutional order and to ensure unfettered access to humanitarian assistance and relief. I thank you.
Thank you, and now let me give the floor to Turkey.
Mr. President, we follow the ongoing clashes with deep concern. International community cannot let the clashes turn into a protracted conflict at severe consequences for the people of Sudan and across the borders. The Turkish authorities are in close contact with all sides for urgent ceasefire and dialogue. We welcome the start of pre-negotiation talks in Jeddah. We support the efforts of the African Union and IGAD in this process. Return to the civilian rule in Sudan is the ultimate goal. Therefore, we appreciate the role played by the African Union, together with UNITAM and IGAD, towards the civilian-led government. We support the calls in the resolution to the parties for a permanent ceasefire and negotiations. At the same time, we endorse the principles of African solutions for African problems. With this understanding, we are ready to contribute to the efforts of the African Union and other regional organizations such as IGAD. Thank you.
Thank you, and let me invite Austria.
Thank you, Mr. President. Austria aligns itself with the statement of the European Union. Three and a half weeks after fighting broke out between the Rapid Support Forces and the Sudanese Armed Forces, bringing fear, deprivation, trauma and suffering to civilians, the human rights situation in Sudan continues to deteriorate dramatically. Austria notes with great concern the escalating violence and attacks on civilians, including widespread sexual and gender-based violence in Sudan. Women and girls are the primary victims of these atrocities, with reports of rape, sexual assault and harassment. In addition, restrictions on freedom of expression, media In addition, restrictions on freedom of expression, media, and access to information in Sudan are of grave concern. Journalists, human rights defenders, and civil society activists face threats, intimidation, and censorship that prevent them from carrying out their important work. Austria fully supports the draft resolution before us, particularly strengthening the designated expert on Sudan, the High Commissioner for Human Rights, and OHCHR. We call on all parties to the conflict to immediately cease hostilities and fighting, to prevent, protect civilians, and to fully comply with and negotiate a durable ceasefire and to respect international human rights law and international humanitarian law. I thank you.
Thank you. Canada, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Canada remains deeply concerned about the deteriorating humanitarian and human rights situation in Sudan and calls for an immediate end to the violence. We are not only preoccupied with this, with what is happening in urban centers, but also with what this will mean for already delicate regions like Darfur. Millions of people are in need of humanitarian assistance. Hospitals and doctors are being targeted, and attacks on communication infrastructure are unacceptable. Canada is also concerned by the increased risk of sexual and gender-based violence, particularly for women, human rights defenders, and women and children seeking to leave. Mr. President, the Council has a distinct and complementary role to play in response to the crisis, one that is coordinated with and reinforces regional efforts to support the establishment of a transitional and civilian-led government. We welcome the draft resolution, in particular its proposal to provide additional resources for the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights to respond to the situation. There can be no enduring peace and security in Sudan without respect for all human rights. Any settlement must ensure that the voices of local civil society are heard and integrated, including political groups, peace builders, and a vibrant press. Canada will continue to support the people of Sudan in their call for a return to a peaceful and civilian-led transition and their aspirations for freedom, peace, and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next on my list is Mauritania.
Thank you, President. My delegation aligns itself with the statements made on behalf of the Arab and Africa groups, and we reaffirm our commitment to the sovereignty, independence, unity, and territorial integrity of Sudan. We also reiterate our firm support for the Sudanese people in these difficult circumstances. We are following with great concern the situation in the sister republic of Sudan, as well as the serious security escalation and its impact on lives of citizens and the country's stability. We call on all parties to show restraint, to give priority to dialogue, and to take into account the best interests of the Sudanese people. We have the view that the priority should be to promote dialogue in order to reach a ceasefire, to put an end to the conflict, and tackle the drastic humanitarian situation on the ground. In this respect, we commend the pre-negotiations in Jeddah, supported by Saudi Arabia and the United States, and the regional mediation efforts led by IGAD and the African Union. We also therefore believe that the convening of a special session of this Human Rights Council could undermine these ongoing efforts. That my delegation would like to reiterate that assistance should be provided to Sudan so as to overcome the difficulties, and support should be lent to the ongoing mediation efforts in order to reach a political settlement. Thank you.
Sudan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Republic of South Sudan has taken note of the reports on the current crisis in Sudan and aligns itself with the statement of the African group. We have been closely monitoring the situation of the ongoing crisis in the sisterly country Sudan. Mr. President, despite the challenges Sudan going through and in line with the principles of solutions to the problems in Africa, South Sudan believes that African solutions remain better options to African problems. And given the historical ties between Sudan and South Sudan, we have been working closely to foster and mediate peaceful political settlements with each other countries. South Sudan supports the EGA initiative whereby the EGA heads of state and government delegated on 16th of April 2023 His Excellency President Sallaha Kim Ayed and his Kenyan and Djibouti counterparts to consult with Sudanese leaders on the agency of arresting the current situation in the sisterly country Sudan. Mr. President, in light of the political initiative of EGA supported by the African group and the ongoing negotiations started in Jeddah under the auspices of Saudi Arabia and United States of America, South Sudan calls on the Human Rights Council to consider lifting the hand justified imposed human rights resolutions on Sudan.
Thank you, and we will continue with Tanzania. Tanzania, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, for giving me the floor. The United Republic of Tanzania aligns itself with the statement made by Cote d'Ivoire on behalf of the African group. We join hands in expressing our solidarity with Sudan and commend the ongoing mediation by the region to ensure that an amicable solution is reached and peace prevails. We further encourage the international community to complement the efforts by Sudan to protect and promote human rights and provide the needed humanitarian assistance. We also encourage continued cooperation between Sudan and the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights and other UN agencies. I thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity.
I thank you, and I'm inviting Tunisia.
Thank you, President. Tunisia is closely following the situation in Sudan, and we would like to express our concern about the security situation and its impact on the political process. We reiterate our solidarity with the Sudanese people in this difficult situation, and of course, we urge everyone to stop the escalation and to return to a course of wisdom and dialogue so as to reach a political settlement, all this with a view to strengthening Sudan's stability and to helping its people. We do, of course, pay tribute to the efforts made at the international and regional levels and the negotiations in Jeddah so as to give top priority to a ceasefire and resume the political process with Sudanese ownership of that process. We would like to underscore the need to preserve the sovereignty, territorial integrity of Sudan, and to ensure non-interference in domestic affairs. We also pay tribute to Sudan's cooperation with the Council. Thank you, President.
Thank you, and the last observer state on my list is Uganda. Uganda, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Uganda aligns with the African group's statement. As a country in the region, Uganda has continued to follow the unfortunate events in the Sudan with keen interest both at a regional and a bilateral level. We remain concerned of the deteriorating situation in the country, in particular the loss of life and destruction of property. This situation is not only creating a humanitarian crisis, but also has far-reaching implications for regional peace and security. Chair, the EGA region has taken necessary steps to address the current situation. The leaders have agreed on a mechanism of engagement with the Sudan leadership, and we urge the international community to support the regional efforts to realize peace, security, and stability in the Sudan. We wish to echo the call by EGA for an immediate and unconditional cessation of hostilities, discalate tensions, and allow unfettered humanitarian access. The most critical issue to date in our view is an immediate cessation of hostilities. Whereas the Council is rightfully concerned with the human rights situation in the Sudan, the question that begs is how this specific session will realize its purpose without an immediate end to the fighting. Therefore, it is essential that this council works cooperatively with the Sudan as a country of concern to successfully achieve the tenets of the resolution under consideration today. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, and I recognize the request for the floor from the Equatorial Guinea. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, President. Equatorial Guinea aligns itself with the statement by the Africa Group. Equatorial Guinea is deeply...
You are not on the list of speakers. You didn't actually register yourself to the list of speakers, so I gave you floor I announced fifteen minutes after the beginning of the session that the list of speakers is closed, and you are not on the list of speakers.
Well, I do apologize, and I would be grateful if I could make a statement.
So let me ask the Council if there are any objections to that. I don't see any objections, so you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, President. The delegation of Equatorial Guinea aligns itself with the statement by the Africa Group. Equatorial Guinea is deeply concerned by the conflict between Sudanese brothers, a conflict which has already cost the lives of innocent people, with more than 500 deaths and hundreds of wounded, thousands of displaced persons. It has destroyed infrastructure, thus worsening the poverty and hunger of the civilian population. Our country, Equatorial Guinea, has always advocated for dialogue and understanding as ways out of a conflict so as to ensure genuine political stability and peace. We believe that the United Nations should better exercise its role so as to put an end to forceful seizures of power which cast aside the will of the population. Equatorial Guinea stands by the brotherly population of Sudan, and at the same time we call for the end to this deadly conflict, this conflict in which the civilian population is always the victim. We commend the United Nations efforts...
You've wasted your time, and we will now continue with the list of speakers for national human rights institutions and non-governmental organizations. And the first speaker on my list is East and Horn of Africa Human Rights Defenders Project. Again, East and Horn of Africa Human Rights Defenders Project. You have the floor, otherwise we will skip you.
...Sudanese activists and human rights defenders, including lawyers, and the youth resistance committees, which have been at the forefront of supporting civilians during the ongoing conflicts. The young events unfolding today in Sudan are a direct result of ongoing impunity for great human rights abuses at the expense of the Sudanese people and their right to life and self-determination. We call for an immediate end to the fighting and for the international community to support Sudan through humanitarian aid, the establishment of an investigative mechanism, and for the continued support of the Sudanese civil society in transiting to a civilian-led democracy.
I do apologize to the Council, but I'm being informed that we need to sort out a technical problem, and we will start again with East and Horn of Africa Human Rights Defenders Project. Please.
Mr. High Commissioner, once again, the Council is forced to address Sudan. The situation is dire. The absolute priority is ceasefire, delivery of aid, restoration of medical care, and humanitarian corridors. While the message holding this special session stands important that the draft resolution is not entirely satisfying, we reiterate the NGO call for an investigative mechanism. Until accessing the country is reasonably safe, experts will have to rely on remote monitoring and other roles. The criminal accountability standard used by judicial mechanisms is hard to reach, but political and moral accountability can deter violation and prevent recurrence, we hope. Mr. President, impunity allowed this to happen and systematic violation to continue without accountability, violence will recur. Up to 15th April, there was no real incentives on political actors to refrain from using violence and no prioritizing of accountability. African bodies and international community must do their utmost to help with democratic forces, hold those responsible for inflicting this misery on the Sudanese people criminally accountable. I thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, this was the East and Horn of Africa Human Rights Defenders Project, and we will continue now with a video intervention by International Bar Association.
The International Bar Association's Human Rights Institutes welcomes this special session. We remain gravely concerned over the conflicts in Sudan and the complete disregard of international humanitarian and human rights role by the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces. We condemn the indiscriminate killing of civilians and the targeting of hospitals, rendering 70% of them inoperable. We are gravely concerned by the exacerbation of existing human rights violations, especially the increased reports of sexual and gender-based violence and the breakdown of the rule of law across the country, with civilians having to fend for themselves with the collapse of existing infrastructure, institutions, and support mechanisms. There have been reports of uniform soldiers displacing civilians from their homes and using civilian areas as shields against military attacks. We highlight the immense difficulty experienced by Sudanese nationals attempting to flee the conflict, including the exceptionally high prices to leave the country and the lack of coordinated evacuation efforts. We commend Sudanese activists and human rights defenders, including lawyers, and the youth resistance committees, which have been at the forefront of supporting civilians during the ongoing conflict. The young events unfolding today in Sudan are a direct result of ongoing impunity for great human rights abuses at the expense of the Sudanese people and their right to life and self-determination. We call for an immediate end to the fighting and for the international community to support Sudan through humanitarian aid, the establishment of an investigative mechanism, and for the continued support of the Sudanese civil society in transiting to a civilian-led democracy.
And the next video will be delivered by International Service for Human Rights.
...activists and volunteers leading the response to the grave humanitarian crisis, despite the imminent threat to their safety and lives, including false accusation of treason threats for both parties in the conflict assassination list and smear campaigns against defenders, including women and children. Since the start of the war, hundreds were killed and thousands injured and missing, including women and children. At least four women medical workers were killed. The exchange of fire between the two parties in residential areas and in front of health facilities resulted in the killing of pregnant women on their way to give birth and preventing women from seeking health care and food for their children. Sexual assaults by men in uniform from both fighting parties were reported, including at least seven cases of rape. Cybersecurity alerts are increasing due to the rise in the hate speech and harassment against women activists in social media. Most essential services are not working, including electricity, water, health care, with no sexual and reproductive health care and support for SGBV survivors, and communication, internet, and banking hindering thousands of people from leaving Khartoum. Displacement of tens of thousands of women and children increases the humanitarian crisis at the borders. We urge for an end of the war, protection of civilians, including activists, open humanitarian corridors, protection of women from SGBV, establishment of an international investigation...
Now, in person, intervention from or by International Federation for Human Rights Leaks. You have the floor.
FIDH, AC, JPS, and SHRM welcome the holding of this special session. The violence between the SAF and the RSF has resulted in the deaths of over 530 civilians, thousands injured or subjected to sexual violence, and close to a million displaced. Millions more are suffering in the resulting humanitarian crisis, with the targeting of civilian infrastructure creating dire food shortages and blocking access to even the most essential of services. Health facilities and medical personnel have been targeted and violated. in violation of international humanitarian law while escalating intertribal tensions in West Darfur risk compounding the effects of the wider conflict. An immediate sustainable ceasefire is an essential first step in resolving this conflict. Restrictions on freedom of movement and expression and on access to information have severely obstructed civic space. Human rights defenders have been targeted with death threats and violence, while women HRDs face particular risks of sexual and gender-based violence. We unequivocally condemn the targeting of civil society who work in precarious conditions at great personal risk to carry out essential human rights and humanitarian work. The legacy of impunity in Sudan has gone hand in hand with continued instability in conflict. Lasting peace cannot be achieved without accountability for all perpetrators of human rights violations and justice for victims. We reiterate the call of over one hundred civil society organizations to establish an independent investigative mechanism. As a well-established tool in the prevention of future human rights violations, accountability cannot be delayed. The time for statements has long passed. We call on states to fulfill their responsibilities as members of the Human Rights Council and take urgent concrete action to protect the human rights of the people of Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Human Rights Watch.
Mr. President, the last four weeks have shown all too starkly the brutal disregard of the parties to the conflict in Sudan for the lives of civilians. They've used heavy weapons in heavily populated urban areas and attacked and bombed critical infrastructure, including water systems and hospitals that civilians who cannot flee need for their survival. Hundreds of civilians have been killed and wounded, hundreds of thousands have fled their homes, often at great cost. Many remain stranded at Sudan's borders. Today, we are partly here due to the global failure to address decades of security force abuses in Sudan. Impunity for atrocities by both the Sudanese army and the Rapid Support Forces underpins the current crisis. In the world's wishful thinking that Sudan was on the right path, accountability has repeatedly been sidelined. This crisis should have set off alarms that the international approach was not working and that decisive action is needed to address the impunity that has only emboldened Sudan's warring actors. In this context, we're dismayed by the collective failure to use this session to establish an independent mechanism to advance accountability which over a hundred Sudanese regional and international civil society organizations have called for, a failure that should be corrected when the Council reconvenes in a few weeks. In the meantime, we look forward to enhanced monitoring and public reporting by the Office and designated experts and hope they will provide guidance on concrete steps that need to be taken to prevent further abuses, protect human rights, and advance accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. And now World Organization Against Torture.
Mr. President, the OMCT, the Giza Group, and the Human Rights Herd remain concerned by the ongoing conflicts related to gross human rights violations in Sudan. More than 400 civilians have been killed and thousands more are displaced without access to food, medical care, and other basic needs. Many other causalities remain unreported due to security situation and the destruction of many health facilities in Khartoum. The situation of human rights defenders is also worrisome. Journalists, doctors, human rights activists, and several aid workers are targeted by warring parties and risk their life and integrity while carrying out their duties during a conflict. Refugees and asylum seekers, particularly fleeing towards the Egyptian border and other Gulf nations, including Saudi Arabia, are blocked at the borders and encouraged to return to Sudan via Port Sudan. If nothing is done, the conflict might escalate and turn into an ethnic conflict as it is already the case in West Darfur and Wadnai State. Mr. President, as we have constantly alerted, this situation is foiled by impunity and it is urgent to establish a UN Human Rights Monitoring and Fat Finding Mission that will help identify and protection gaps and formulate specific recommendations for accountability and assistance program, including the protection of civilians, refugees, IDPs, and human rights defenders. This can only reinforce ongoing regional efforts and only justice will bring peace in Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will continue with a video statement by Christian Solidarity Worldwide.
Thank you, Mr. President. Military leaders continue to systematically undermine the prospects of a transition in Sudan as civilians bear the brunt of their actions. This Council must stand resolutely with the Sudanese people in calling for an immediate and unconditional release, emphasizing that attacks on civilians, including human rights defenders, medical personnel, humanitarian workers, and refugees, and targeting of hospitals and places of worship severely violate international human rights and international humanitarian law and amount to a war crime which will not go unpunished. On the seventeenth of April, the Anglican Cathedral in Khartoum was seized and used as a military base by RSF fighters who forced forty-two people sheltering there, including the Archbishop and his family, to leave the building after being physically assaulted. In Bahri, the evangelical church was burned and partially burned. We urge the Council to reiterate the inviolability of religious, cultural, and medical locations and any attempt to restore possibility without significant civilian involvement in the peace process will prove unsustainable. Additionally, a long-term commitment by this Council to supporting promotion, protection, and fulfillment of human rights will prove to be crucial in securing a lasting peace.
Delivered by Frontline, the International Foundation for the Protection of Human Rights Defenders.
Frontline Defenders works to protect human rights defenders at risk. Since the eruption of fighting on the fifteenth of April, human rights defenders in Sudan are at increased risk of assassination and have received death threats from all parties to the conflict. Extremists have publicly called for a fatwa to kill journalists and civil society leaders. Human rights defenders face increasingly dire circumstances with dwindling supplies and unreliable access to power, the internet, and banking services. This has limited their ability to carry out their crucial work, providing support to those in need, documenting human rights violations, and reporting back to partners. They are inherently at risk of targeted retaliations. Last week, human rights defenders Mohammed Ahmed and Mohammed Jamal were abducted and tortured by the Sudanese military while providing medical assistance. Their hands were cut and their head shaved in an apparent attempt to humiliate them before they were released. We call on all parties to immediately cease hostilities and ensure human rights defenders can safely carry out their work, including by reinstating secure communication channels and banking services. We call on the Human Rights Council to establish an international investigative mechanism to ensure accountability for human rights violations.
Now, a in-person intervention by international organization for the elimination of all forms of racial discrimination. You have the floor.
Thank you, President. We welcome the convening of this special session in response to the humanitarian emergency in the country. The numbers reported on the ground are unequivocal in confirming the humanitarian crisis affecting the population as a result of continued instability for years. The utmost urgency is to guarantee humanitarian access no matter what in accordance with humanitarian obligations. Humanitarian access must be granted the necessary safety to intervene. We know people in need of assistance reach more than fifteen millions, the third of Sudan's population, and that was before the current crisis began. We had too many worrying testimonies of an already fragile economy and precarious healthcare system. Now, health workers also have to deal with water shortage, power outage, and lack of basic medical supplies with the constant fear of being caught in the crossfire as some attacks have been directed at health facilities. The number of internally displaced people and refugees was high before the conflict. It dramatically increased in the past week. We therefore ask for urgent prompt measures to be taken to assist the displaced and neighboring countries in this period. EFORD and Geneva International Center for Justice urge all concerned party that civilians must be assured a safe evacuation from their home and security must be guaranteed for the ten of thousand that have already left. We join the call for cessation of hostilities and respect for the principle of international law, especially the prohibition to target civilians. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will continue with Amnesty International.
Mr. President, we welcome the holding of this special session. At crucial moments since 2018, Sudanese people have staged waves of massive protests, oftentimes at great personal risk to demand a system that better promotes and protects their rights. The Rapid Support Forces and the Sudan Armed Forces each have histories of committing serious violations of human rights and humanitarian law in the country, particularly in Darfur. These are forces that worked together since 2018 to crush protests and then to stage a coup against the country's transitional government in October 2021. These forces are violating international humanitarian law again, but now in their conflict with each other, as documented by us and detailed by many speakers today, causing massive suffering for civilians throughout the country. This must end. We call on all states to open safe pathways and ensure protection and support for people fleeing Sudan and to provide prompt access to asylum and protection against refoulement. Ongoing violations in Sudan are part of a long history of impunity and the Human Rights Council must act with ambition and in a manner complementary to other international, regional, and subregional efforts to help break this cycle of impunity. The Human Rights Council should establish an independent accountability mechanism along the lines called for by over a hundred civil society organizations. This is what is needed and what should have happened today. We urge all delegations to support the resolution tabled as a step in the right direction and to support establishing such an independent accountability mechanism at the earliest possible opportunity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Association Mauna for Human Rights and Immigration.
Thank you, President. We welcome the convening of this special session and express our utmost concern for the current human rights violations such as the killing of civilians and the indiscriminate attacks on hospitals taking place in Sudan. While the situation has been escalating over the last two months, we reiterate that even before the violence began on April fifteenth, millions of people in Sudan and neighboring countries were already highly dependent on aid. More than a third of Sudan's population is already facing acute food insecurity and the ongoing violence is only exacerbating this crisis, notably due to the restricted access granted to humanitarian workers. In addition to the crippling economic and security crisis, the people of Sudan are subject to gross human rights violations such as arbitrary arrests and detention, unlawful attacks and killings, looting, obstruction of access to health care, and the forced occupation of civilian infrastructure. Geneva International Center for Justice and Mauna call on all parties to abide by their obligations under international human rights law and all relevant UN entities to take necessary measures to help those in need. We also note that what is happening in Sudan is only one example of the rise of militia and paramilitary groups in the region. Worrying situations in which powerful militias compete for and share power with the military have already been observed in other countries such as Yemen and Iraq. We reiterate our stance calling for the respect of the rule of law and the independence of national institutions. I thank you.
Thank you. And now we will continue with a video statement by Mart for Peace.
... for peace development and human rights would like to express its appreciation to the core group on this draft resolution. We are especially appreciative of the clause referencing to an enhancement of the interactive dialogue on the human rights situation in Sudan to include the participation of civil society and other stakeholders as we believe that input from more stakeholders on the matter will lead to a multi-dimensional dialogue. Mr. President, we however believe that operative clause six requires more details in order to set out specific guidelines as to how the international community can provide protection to vulnerable populations in Sudan without risking the national security of the neighboring member states that may offer refuge. MRT also suggests adding a clause that calls for the urgent establishment of a hybrid court to prosecute individuals responsible for past atrocities regardless of their affiliation or position in order to deter current perpetrators from repeating these atrocities and securing guarantees of non-recurrence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Misam Center for Human Rights in person.
Thank you, President. The increasing reports of violence and human rights violations in the conflict in Sudan are extremely concerning, which is why this special session is imperative at such a critical moment in Sudan's history. We express our deepest concerns over the hostility taking place in heavily populated areas, the unlawful means of warfare, and the targeting of civilians and civilian infrastructure. This directly violates the international humanitarian law principles of distinction, proportionality, and precaution enshrined in customary international law and the Geneva Conventions, both which must be respected by all parties to the conflict. We further strongly condemn the lack of access to humanitarian aid to civilians within Sudan. We implore all parties to open humanitarian corridors and allow humanitarian aid institutions to conduct their work and for them to do so in a safe and timely manner. The international community must also double its efforts to address the increasing humanitarian situation in Sudan which will, according to the UNHCR, lead to a massive exodus. Therefore, we call on Sudan's neighboring countries to abide by their human rights obligations and keep their borders open, streamlining asylum procedures, and ensuring respect for the principle of non-refoulement. Finally, Misam Center for Human Rights and Geneva International Center for Justice strongly condemn the ongoing hostilities and urge the parties to return to the negotiation table striving to de-escalate the conflict and achieve a common and durable solution for peace in Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you. And we continue with Rancourt African for Defense of the Right of the Home.
President, Rado welcomes the organization of this special session, the third of its kind on Sudan since the creation of this council. For four weeks now, extreme violence and massive and serious human rights violations in Sudan have been ongoing and the corpses continue to pile up in the streets of Khartoum, not to mention the number of wounded and the massive flows of displaced persons and refugees to neighboring countries. Rado firmly condemns the ongoing barbarian airstrikes on civilian population and the destruction of housing and hospitals and the looting of the World Food Programme and other humanitarian organizations. After the genocide of Darfur and the fall of Omar Bashir, all the hopes of the brave Sudanese people for democracy, freedom, and justice and the fight against impunity are doomed to failure. Rado holds the two generals responsible for crimes, killings, summary executions, and extruditional killings since the start of the crisis. It is time that the international community mobilizes itself to support the political dialogue process and an immediate military intervention in order to protect the defensed population. Moreover, Rado continues to be concerned by the calls for racial hatred as well as manifestations of racism between different ethnic and tribal groups. In conclusion, Rado calls on all parties to observe an immediate ceasefire and to open up a humanitarian corridor for public health assistance and for meeting basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And now let me invite Broad National Movement.
Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for holding this special session on behalf of my colleagues. I pay tribute to the memory of martyrs and I call on you to put an end to this absurd conflict which has been going on since the fifteenth of April and which is a war crime in keeping with Article eight of the Rome Statute which created the ICC. It is necessary to uphold and respect international instruments which call for protection of civilians. We call for the necessary aid to be provided to people who need it and for humanitarian corridors to be opened to evacuate civilians and provide medication and protect hospitals and places of worship. We also call for the Islamist movement of Sudan to be included on the list of terrorist organizations that threaten international peace and security. I thank you.
Thank you. And now let me invite Interfaith International.
President, the breaking out of a fresh spiral of violence in Sudan is the direct consequence of the failure of the transition and the chronic impunity enjoyed by those responsible for the genocide in Darfur. Interfaith International unreservedly condemns the continuing attacks on civilian populations who are defenseless, destruction of hospital infrastructure, bombardment of civilian and inhabited areas, looting of humanitarian depots, and targeted attacks on doctors, UN personnel, journalists, and human rights defenders are crimes against humanity. Interfaith International calls on both parties to the conflict to create conditions to open a humanitarian corridor and to protect hospital infrastructure to save human lives. Interfaith International supports the setting up of an international commission of inquiry and the appointment of an expert panel to assist the country in preventing ethnic cleansing. In conclusion, Interfaith International fully supports the struggle of the people of Sudan for democracy and we reaffirm our commitment to security, sovereignty, unity, independence, and territorial integrity of Sudan. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And the Institute for Human Rights is the next.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Institute for Human Rights is very concerned about Sudan's humanitarian situation in the wake of the conflict that started in mid-April of this year. Already, the situation with refugees and internally displaced people is critical. According to the UN data, the conflict had caused approximately 700,000 people to become internally displaced and the incoming reports show that these figures are dramatically increasing with each passing day. There is a serious risk to food security in the country as supply chains are being disrupted. Just recently, a fire destroyed the crop market in Yala, the capital city of South Darfur. Just recently, a fire destroyed the crop market in Yala, the capital city of South Darfur, which can result in a potential shortage of food in the region. The healthcare system is of particular concern. The Sudanese Doctors Trade Union has reported that 60 out of 88 hospitals in or near clash zones remain closed, with 28 being threatened with closure due to a lack of staff and essential supplies. Doctors and medical workers have been threatened and faced repressions, physical violence, illegal surveillance, and tracking. Institute for Human Rights believes that international community and Human Rights Council in particular should use all the available mechanisms to facilitate a quick and to hostilities and provide rapid humanitarian assistance to the affected population. Only thus, a greater humanitarian catastrophe can be averted. I thank you.
Thank you, and now let me give the floor to the Institute for Reporters' Freedom and Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. I RFS is concerned about a considerable deterioration of the human rights situation in Sudan since 15 April 2023. An armed conflict between SAF and RSF indiscriminately targets civilian population and infrastructure, resulting in 600 people dead and thousands more injured. While recognizing the human casualties as a key issue to the promptly solved, the RFS would like to highlight that the conflict has placed many journalists and media workers within the country in a difficult position, further exacerbating their challenges of their job. After the military coup in 2021, Sudanese authorities already introduced several restrictions of freedom of expression by imposing internet blackout, banning media outlets and press institutions, detaining, beating, and intimidating a numbers of Sudanese journalists. The situation with the access to information and journalist safety was worsened since the escalation of the conflict, as the radio and television headquarters were one of the key targets of the two parties. Local and international media representatives report in constant threat of their lives while performing their duties, both from the crossfire and the suspension tools from their armed groups. The RFS call to UN member states to undertake all possible international regulatory mechanisms to ensure lasting peace and safety for the people of Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you, and the last speaker on my list is African Center for Democracy and Human Rights Studies. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The African Center associated itself with the rebels and concerns expressed by the High Commission for Human Rights before this special session. No one knows the exact numbers of victims, civilians and military alike, but all evidence suggests that thousands of individuals lost their lives or injured, mainly due to indiscriminate aerial bombardment and heavy artillery. And we call for immediate end of these crimes. The ongoing military confrontation scrapes the hopes and aspirations of the Sudanese people for better life, peaceful transition to civilian governance and enjoyment of liberties. This unfortunate development harbinger that peace in Sudan is unattainable dream and that millions of war victims in Darfur and elsewhere in the country will continue to suffer for years to come. As a reminder, Mr. President, Sudan has been under the public procedure of the Human Rights for over 30 years, yet we see no change in government practices. The painful reality behind this sad story, which is yet to be addressed, is that while Sudan is an African country and officially colorblind, however, racism, discrimination, and manipulation of ethnic and tribal differences are at the heart of the country's protracted violence and political instability. It is time for Sudan to address the root causes of armed conflicts, and it is also time for the African Union and the international community at large to continue to treat the symptoms and leave the disease uncured. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, thank you very much. Excellencies, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, as I've indicated, we have exhausted the list of speakers. So let me thank you for your contributions, for your active participation. Let me thank the interpreters for allowing us actually to finish the whole list of speakers this morning. This is the end of this morning's session. We will reconvene at 3:00 PM to take connection on the draft resolution A/ HRC/ S36/ L1. And now, let me declare a close the first meeting of this 36th session, special session of the Human Rights Council, and let me wish you good afternoon and see you at 3:00 PM sharp. Thank you.